Six oh two. Call meeting to order to work on budgetary items. Budgetary items at this point. Thank you, I'm good sir, how are you? Stayin out of trouble? Yeah. We get any more of those, we'll put them right here. Uh, just that is the historical societies. Number. So at the last meeting. We're in a, we're um, able to. Approve the previous minutes because. The forum that was there was Todd, John and myself and. Todd will be here just later, so we'll. Approve those minutes later on. Um, we can approve. No, we cannot do that either. Cause Lance wasn't at that meeting. Uh, January twenty eighth.
Yeah, no, we're gonna have to. He said it's seven o'clock anyhow.
Right, that's true, that's, this is budget day, so. Lance, what we've gone over so far. Is on that copy that I gave you. We will get the numbers from the conservation committee during the regular meeting. Ballot clerks, we didn't scratch because. We weren't sure if um, Kathy was gonna wanna put anything in that. Since it is a primary year.
Oh yeah.
And it looks like back in twenty twenty. We did have some expenditure there.
Yeah, there's going to be.
So I wasn't sure if we should budget for that. Um, just going down through, we scratched the book fund as we have put money into that for the book restoration. And it does seem to be at this point making money. Um, what did we figure up, John? It was about three thousand dollars it made.
Last year.
Last year, yeah.
That's what they said, you know.
Correct. Cemetery expenses again, we will get when we do the cemetery commission and during the regular meeting. Court tax, direct tax and direct tax from previous year will all be things that Vera will have to.
They're given to us.
Yep. Um, dispatch fee, Todd actually did get that.
Yeah, he sent it in a text.
Was it text or an email?
Uh, email.
I thought so, I was gonna say, I don't think we're.
And the book fund made thirty seven hundred thirty eight dollars last year.
Perfect.
Let me put my phone on mute.
Was that on uh? Dispatch fees right here.
Gmail.
Um, dispatch fees for the year of. Uh, this fee of seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty even.
Dispatch seventeen thousand.
Seven to eight, correct?
Seven to eight, and they also sent the ambulatory fee?
Right.
They changed than what we thought it was gonna be?
Okay. I believe you're right, ambulance is right here. Uh, what they did is they finally put it into a chart form, which makes.
Oh, right, it's forty one thousand and two hundred forty seven seventy nine?
That is what we had for this year.
But they, they actually amateurize or not amateurize it, but uh, put it together for. The next couple of years. We were missing some pages, Lance is what it came down to, like what the fees would be for the next five years when we signed.
Okay.
Contract, so. We gotta go back to them to get it.
Okay. In our portion of the contract, so what that's showing you there, John, is um. Last year's we budgeted. Thirty nine, seven fifty eighty, but we, we budgeted more than that, correct?
Uh, for the ambulance?
Yeah.
We changed the number to forty one thousand two hundred forty seven dollars.
Previous year though.
Previous year, we had. Ooh, I got the expense with them, let me see.
Budget wasn't on the other page.
Yeah.
So the other thing that makes us. Not tricky, but. Fun, we'll go with fun is. Like, for example, the road account is here, but the budgeted numbers are here.
Yeah, we budgeted.
So we've gotta jump from here. To here.
It's a little bit of a.
To get it, it's not super complex, but it's.
Yeah. So we budgeted thirty, last year it was thirty eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
We budgeted it. Right.
We, and we. We did thirty nine thousand seven hundred and fifty four oh eight, so we were really close on that one.
So we're just going over Terry, over. This page, which has my. Numbers, the new budgeted numbers, and I just, it's my copy, so I just.
That's seven. We had the budget input for seven visitors at the seven P M.
Well, you know what? We, it is, it is budgetary information, yes?
Yeah.
Everybody agree?
Yeah, we have a call.
Yeah.
We can.
Well, yeah.
You don't have to stay here for an hour.
So. Uh, let me check the new mail here.
When did she send?
They. Oh, when did she send them?
Yeah, when did she send them? You know? Cause I think Tammy, wasn't Tammy traveling to P A today?
Oh, I need to double check our folder here. And. No, that's fine, I'm glad you, I'm glad you did, because we don't, we don't want you guys to sit here for an hour listening to us if. You might have other things to do, right?
I don't.
Uh, highway. That turns long, you mean?
I don't have it in Gmail.
Uh, there's weird mitigation, preliminaries.
The only thing I got from Tammy was the meeting that minute.
Yeah, I don't, we don't actually have anything.
I, I, I did not receive anything either, so.
So, I have no problem leaving them ahead, Josh. Do you have it? In hard copy?
I have no problem moving ahead except they were running the, running the. Uh, posted agenda as seven. For visitors.
No, I think this will work. Okay, choosing fees. This, this just breaks it down by. Exactly how much you want for each item, right?
Yeah. I mean, first, if someone was to see it. Or think that they could listen in and say.
Okay. Okay, if that's something that uh, comes up. Before it's town meeting day. The thing you could do is when this item comes up. You could uh, stand up and ask to amend it. Alright, okay. And amend it with X number of dollars anticipated uh, going into a. Land acquisition fund for the conservation committee, does that make sense?
This is our land, another it's.
No. Nope, we have to have this submitted to Kathy by. I think it's the twentieth.
Okay.
So I mean, you've got twelve days.
To.
So I mean. If you can, if you can do it and email it to Tammy, that, that's, that seems fine, this is the proposed. With the possible amendment to add a land acquisition fund. Is Linda, I thought I saw, yes, Linda, you're either, um, just because we were budgeting. Last uh, oh, was it Thursday? And we were talking about the monument that has also come up in some emails, which we'll get to during the meeting. But where? I don't remember. Where that was paid for last time we added names. Yes.
It was seen. And it, and he was selling his uh, business.
Okay.
For rain off, and rainbow came in and did, and the job was. Not to our expectations.
Okay.
Even though it was cheaper than the bids from the.
Okay. Yep. Do you remember um, where, where we paid for that? Was that something that the select board said we would take out of the general fund? We couldn't remember.
I believe the general fund paid for that.
I wasn't sure if it was the general fund or if there was a. Committee. That was in charge of that.
No, I, I believe the select board.
Okay.
Took care of that in the general.
Okay. So. That in this case. Uh, is that the one that's just come in?
Yeah.
For my old neighbor.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, either that or they're waiting in Limbo, cause there was another email today, did you see that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, but we'll, we can talk about that during new mail.
Is this the monument?
Yes, monument expenses, we did put two hundred and fifty dollars in that, so I think we're covered there, okay? And we'll leave that, I just, I just wanted to make sure that was on my brain quick, sorry. Um, so we have. Uh, let's see, conservation committee has submitted. Uh, historical society has submitted. Cemetery commission, do you have a budget you would like to submit?
Same as last year, fifteen thousand.
Okay. I didn't see it. But Tammy is out. And.
What was the cemetery, maybe it was fifteen thousand?
Cemetery commission, yeah, fifteen. Now, if, if I'm not mistaken, you didn't ask for that much last year, it was voted from the floor to increase. Okay.
I believe they requested a smaller amount and there was an in, increase to it, wasn't it?
It did, so was it the year prior to that, you asked for? Okay, I remember there being discussion on the floor from it and it ended up getting increased, okay?
I thought last year the increase was to help cover the. The uh, the loan. The, the fee on the loan was the increase from last year? I'm sorry, historical, I apologize.
Plan of mission, do we? Is that the one that's in, okay? Sorry, Pat, you wear so many hats, I wasn't sure if we discussed that. Excellent, listeners, but.
Where's the cemetery?
Cemetery commission requested.
Their current cemetery expenses. I see expenses, I see cemetery expenses where. Here's the. Four hundred and fifty eight dollars, so I'm trying to figure out where, where's it showing what we did last year?
What we.
No, cemetery commission, where. We're wandering all over the place, you'll have to forgive us. Just trying to find last year's cemetery commission request.
It's on the, all the requests?
Yeah, well, you're saying that with last year's request, it was fifteen.
It would be in, it'd have to be in the book.
Yeah, so it's just the book.
Just the book, cause that's voted on separately.
Cause I don't have it anywhere on any of the sheets, I see the expense was, it shows the expense was four hundred and fifty eight dollars, but I don't even know. I think that was the uh, I, I think that was the uh. The other cemetery? No, I, yeah. Yes.
Go ahead, Cooks Brook was, yep. The actual. Budgeted voted on amount would have been in the book and not on our paperwork.
Transfer to ground, to reappraisal cemetery. Fifteen, yeah, Maple Grove Cemetery showed the town appropriate fifteen thousand, uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Which number eighteen landed here, we said yes. So.
Yeah. Sounds nice. In the listers here, John?
Yeah.
You got that?
I do have.
This does show this year. That the uh, salary payroll. Will be voted on. As in previous years, we have moved the money from the state that was for um. Oh.
Right, the money that the state supplied us that we thought was to help pay for the, the salaries, it's actually supposed to go to the appraisals.
Right.
So now we're gonna vote on it.
Correct, yes, I have that. Here. There's a note here that Vera made that that money will be transferred into that reappraisal fund. And we will from this point forward need to vote on listers, budgets and. Salaries.
Right.
Do you ever, anybody have any questions on that, there's a nice little.
Yeah, I think we should probably hit each group appropriately. Right?
And I don't, I think. From what we've seen for expenses.
It's pretty reasonable.
Uh, what we, what my expectation was is that we would compare what you have here. To the expenses you had the previous year. We, we have all that, it's right here, um. This is your budgeted for next year, so. Okay. Yep, yes.
That we wanted to make sure we brought up to you, and help you, and help us.
Okay.
Some things we wanted you to remember as you were going through. We wanted us to remember as well.
Yep.
You'd asked us about the pain also, we put a little in that about that.
Yes.
And then I requested it because I have paying mileage in another place to other people. And have researched that, that the mileage actually hurts. Of Vermont has gone up. And so we did ask for that increase.
You know, do you know what you're getting now, just curious?
It was fifty six cents, that's correct.
Okay, yes.
And I think it's sixty five or sixty.
Yeah.
Sixty seven.
Yeah. Sixty seven, five, six, nope, it's not. And I think that's actually set by, there's a federal.
It is.
There's a federal number. Yes. Yep, shall the town appropriate ten thousand dollars to the reappraisal fund? Yep.
I gotta talk from the back that it's going to do. The reappraisal, and he took the present, he was helping to say.
Wow, excellent.
So I'm gonna have to explore other options.
Okay. Well, we're plunking money in, they're still not gonna get to us for a few years if I remember correctly.
Well, no, actually, I think the last, yeah, the last that I heard is it was supposed to start early summer twenty four.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's supposed to, but most towns are struggling with finding somebody.
Well, that's what, we had somebody.
They were talking about it at the school board.
There's that.
Can I ask, um, and it's just curiosity more than anything, last year in twenty three. We budgeted just under fifteen thousand dollars in payroll. Was that a miss? Did we miss that, or is the, it, what's the three thousand dollar? Increase? Do I miss that?
Yeah, you did.
Is it here? Oh, that's another one, I have paper everywhere. Payroll expenses? Is that the note?
Yeah.
You know, you, you told us that once before already. Extension for lodging twenty twenty four in the ground.
Actually have a third lister that's also working.
Right, well, that's what, that's what I was looking at the, what we paid last year, right, twenty twenty three total expenses?
Yeah, fourteen nine.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was with all three listers.
That was with.
Two and two and three quarter, when did you start, Pat?
It's at September in the note. To read the notes.
Three months, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Seven o'clock.
You mean the March meeting?
Yes.
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 We'll still be here.
Yes.
But is everything going on by?
Australian ballot?
No.
Not everything.
I, I think, I think we're still talking pretty much the hybrid we did last year, right, we're part of it.
Yeah, the main budget will be. Uh, road in general. The other stuff will be voted from the floor, cemetery, uh, that's the way I've understood it, uh, all the. All the others, the main budget will be.
Refer to. Last year's town report. It'll be pretty much the same.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Oh. I think that you, I could find base on money, people have it, yeah, Tammy could put a notice out about that.
Coming last year.
Uh, there's a, a general, I guess, disinformation out there that it's not gonna be a town meeting.
Okay.
Um, historical society is not doing a lunch and, and because there's no town meeting, right?
Uh, please, yeah, please refer to last year's town report. For the March seventh. Uh. Meeting that we had, and we're, we're gonna be following pretty much the same thing.
Okay, the main difference is the general fund and road account. Will not be. Items, they will be voted in the booth.
Yeah, just, just so you know, I might want to get that out to the people.
The people.
It's a two race.
Mm-hmm.
Australian ballot. We, we, yeah, that's right.
Conservation committee.
So wait a minute, so we have the listers.
Yes.
Uh, we are looking, lister salaries.
Zoning, I assume. Brian will probably show up at seven.
Listers, listers.
And library, cause I know you have a meeting, did you, do you have a budget or that's what your meeting is tonight?
Got general idea, we should finalize it tonight. So we can get that to you tomorrow morning, uh, by email or.
If uh, if the lights are still on. By all means, yep, yep.
There's not gonna be any. We're not having.
So is it, I'm assuming it's the same format as normal, we'll take the reserve funds transfer to.
I think it's being there is no. Carol, so we are.
You, you budgeted well.
Well. Four hundred dollars too few, but.
Oh. Gee.
Somebody didn't get paid, somebody didn't get paid in December.
We didn't include the final money that had to go out at the end of the quarter. I think that we would have been.
Okay.
Oh.
So um, it's pretty much as we said last year, we did wanna ask what your thoughts are, and maybe this is a terrible question. Um, that's our, we, we could be under budgeted for next year, we're already, we know we're already in the whole, uh. Twenty twenty fours, I was wondering, what would you suggest we increase by percentage point? Cause we just.
For fuel?
Fuel.
I. It's an election year. I bet you see fuel drop.
Yep, I just bought some.
Politically, I bet you see fuel drop, to be honest with you. Uh, we haven't got the roads yet, but as far as. Same, same here, it's what we just did for. Let me find my paper.
Almost.
What do we do?
We went from twenty seven hundred to five thousand.
We did.
We did, almost twenty eight hundred, we went up to a hundred dollars.
That's where we budgeted?
The what percentage?
Maybe, oh, I apologize, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No, we remain the same, we budgeted five thousand dollars for heating fuel last year, and we kept it the same this year. Because the actual cost of what we had this year was only twenty seven hundred. Due to a couple of things, the furnace being down a couple of times.
Yeah.
And um, and it's been a, it's been a mild winter so far. Um.
I hate the fact we don't have the actual budget number. It's the expense number that.
Yeah, so we, we have a zero percent increase.
I know we budgeted before, that's where you keep.
Um, I guess that's, that's kind of a gamble, I mean, we have, we do have increases in other areas, and that's. Kind of the benefit we have of having so many items is that if we run low on some spots, we can overrun in other spots and we're okay. Um. But yeah. Um, but yeah, that's.
So we have nothing major planned for next year. To, to budget for.
About your flux, okay? Okay.
When do items for the warning have to be in?
Items for the warning have to be in before, I believe it's the twenty second.
Twenty second.
That is our, like, we're coming in unless Kathy tells us otherwise between now and then, because she's the one that has to have it submitted. Um. It's usually that Monday, that meeting will come in an hour early. Do all the finalizing, make sure everything's where we want it, hand it to Kathy and she submits it.
Because the uh. If the Fairfield plant is number one. In East Fairfield, their water supply. The reservoir is in Bakersfield, and so five years ago, we voted, the town voted on, no, it was ten years ago. Voted to exempt them from taxes, so they don't need to go there. So I'm gonna contact them and make sure they get a.
So they will need to, yeah, they will need to submit an item, excuse me, for the warning. Shall the town of Bakersfield? Yep, okay, yes, if, and you said you're gonna take care of that, and they'll send it to us and. Okay, perfect. Yep. Yeah, you can.
I wanna go back to the lister's budget, I know we moved on, but I wasn't finished with it for a moment. You have three hundred dollars in here for education. Are, are, are you including? That's, that, that. Couple days of training that you went to in September? I, is that money in here, is three hundred enough?
How was this last time? Um. We're aware of some deal, but I think it's. I guess they do it in different parts of the state.
Over the round.
Closer. But we did, we did up that, we did.
Did you? Okay, cause it just seems like, I thought you were, oh, I thought we took some from the education.
Yes, last year we budgeted two fifty.
Right.
For lister education, it came in at about three hundred.
Yeah.
Um.
And you add.
Nothing's going down.
Things going up, right, you know, my concern, you're getting my concern, um. I.
We might not use it.
There again, if you need an extra fifty dollars for heating oil, yeah.
You know, I'm just saying, I think that you, you, you're cutting it too, my personal thing is you're cutting it too thin, if you really plan to go to the classes, you may wind up only two to get to it.
That was new program, which they're still trying to figure out how it's settled, so. We might go to something for that.
Right, is that the only addition?
That was, that was my main thing, cause I said.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean addition on that question.
Yeah, that's all I have.
So you would like to increase that from three to four hundred? Okay.
I asked as a group.
You've been outroded.
Two to one. Well, you spent two ninety four, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, it was my topic in Burlington. Last year, the year before, I think it was.
Yeah, it was way, it was Killington, right, it was.
That brings your total budget to nineteen oh four oh. Just in case you were curious. Nineteen oh five oh? Nineteen thousand forty dollars. I got my math skills in Bakersfield, feeling pretty proud right now. Um. Listers, planning commission, zoning. Do you have a budget you would like to propose to us, sir?
I do not.
You do not, okay, um, just to give you. Were you, did you by any chance look at previous years?
I had no.
Okay.
On, you know, but.
Rest, I'm zoning legal. So. Just to give you an idea. And we're perfectly fine with. Doing this, I think we did it last year. Last year for zoning. Random expenses. There was five hundred dollars. Two hundred and three of that were spent. Okay. Now, I know you've done a lot of mailing since. Well, no, this would be up to date, so. That probably includes most of your mailings that have happened. Uh, zoning legal. We put in twenty five hundred.
Yeah.
We, we have spent three hundred and seventy five. However. There are some buzzes that. Things were not. Before your time. Things were not necessarily handled in a timely fashion. Which could lead to some. Issues. Um. And we can, we can discuss, well, we can discuss right now whether or not the board and yourself feel like that's gonna be enough. Or if that needs to be increased. Um.
Well, did we already find out if there's a suit out there or not?
We, I haven't heard, I've just heard rumblings.
Right.
Nothing official.
We talked about in. Five, if you remember, that's what we have written down. When it's an iPhone.
Okay.
Uh, on that night, we bumped, that's your sheet, not mine. It's on your page five. In the possibility that some activities may happen, and we know.
You mean you, Todd and I.
Yes.
We did talk about bumping that. We, so what we had done is we had left uh, regular costs at five hundred. And and doubled legal to five thousand, which that can always go down if nothing comes about. But, I'd hate to be scrambling to find money if something does happen, so.
Yeah, and you're talking like two, two, two bumps with a lawyer and you've already spent that.
Right, yeah.
It's not a lot of money, when you think about what it costs us when we, every time you talk to the lawyers.
Any other? Questions or issues with that zoning, is that? Okay, that's. That's, that's what we hope for. Are you okay with that, Terry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you weren't here the other night, and neither was Lance and.
Right, no, no, I agree.
I think that covers everything, unless I miss somebody, don't be afraid to shout out. That covers everybody who we invited, yes. That was. Uh, planning commission is on the list.
Yeah, we did request something, uh, we were told that uh, but uh, uh, we were told that um, Ken and um, Bill. Were going to be attending tonight's meeting.
And they may not come in until seven either, you know, it it might have been a. It's quite possible there were multiple times given out, so that there wasn't an overflow and everybody. Wanting their second at the same time, so. Um, if we don't hear anything from them, we will reach out again though, for sure. Does anybody have any other questions as far as what you have given us and? No? Just looking at them real quick, I don't. We have no issues, not, you know, no issues that would prevent us from putting them on the warrant at this point, the way they are, so.
Where was the historical society?
The first one we got, I might not have passed it down through, I apologize.
I know I saw.
Take a minute to thank all of you. Contribution.
Not yet.
To running this small community. Each and every one of you do a part that is very important to what. Needs to be done. To make sure everything runs smoothly, and I, I wanna thank you very much.
What it was broke down to, because they've taken out.
Keep that to yourself, Lance.
So hopefully, talk to you without this. Thing in front of my face at some point. No, I feel like crap.
I do not, thank you so much.
I am testing negative, so. Um, I, I. Now, we're good, we're good, oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, the first time I had COVID, I was like, Jesus, this is nothing. I, it felt like I've had colds ten times worse than this, this time.
Shut it up, we're all going home. No. Are we, are we pausing, I apologize, are we pausing this recording or are we continuing with the budget portion?
Well, I thought we were continuing with the budget.
Okay, just making sure, I just don't know what we're doing.
Yep, doesn't matter, his mic's still on, so everything's on there anyway.
What I meant, but yeah, it's okay.
Well, can we legally start the regular section of the meeting at?
Six thirty-five? No. It's one for seven.
Yeah.
But we have Mac here, and we have road stuff to do.
Absolutely, Ken.
Roadhouse. I'm going down. We've got a budget for road, right? Yeah, what meeting it's on?
Did you get a copy of this?
No, I was, I was just handing it back cuz I didn't get a copy. Josh has the only copy.
That was the only copy, you're right. That selfish bastard kept going to copy to himself, telling you, hey, Mac, how you doing? What do you need?
Besides better weather, hey, nice job on the roads.
It's like two paragraphs.
Uh, where is the road budget?
There it is, the road account.
Wasn't sure if I was gonna have to read it to you there for a minute.
You want my headache, I'll give it to you.
No, sorry, no, it's not.
Then it's off the floor.
It's off the floor.
Do you have to leave at seven? I believe it's right there. What is it? Our water meeting. He's gone.
Yeah, crap.
So. I can come back in, that doesn't usually take very long. I appreciate it. Just wanna get it started.
All right.
I'm good. Think it'll take long to go down through it, I mean, I don't know which guys got listed, but. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Where are we at?
So we're gonna start right at the top.
ATV permits?
Advertising.
I don't have advertising.
Both of them have advertising, how do you not have advertisements?
Expenses and I go over the receipts, so I. Proceed. I don't know, it says FY, FY twenty-four budget. Why does it say FY twenty-four budget there, let's just go, advertising, salaries is actually bubble. Salaries?
Advertising.
Advertising.
We have paid out sixty dollars.
Do we budget for it? We need this in one sheet.
There we go.
This is ridiculous. I would assume that must have been for.
That was the Alan's position, yep, so. I have to ask you, should we budget for advertising for another position?
I would, just in case. Son of a. I mean, it's only sixty bucks, John.
Uh, no, that was when we advertised in the courier, no longer does that, now we have to do it in the messenger, about five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
That's a one runner.
Yeah, that's a single run.
Really?
Yeah.
Burnt and press is ridiculous.
My question is.
There's a courier, it's just online.
Right.
Yeah, but who reads that anymore? Who reads the?
That's the, that's the hard part, is. So, do we budget for two runs?
I don't really need there are anymore.
At a thousand bucks?
Well.
That's hard, yeah, I know, I'm not. I don't want to do that either. You can. They can. Yep.
Is that cheaper to?
I'm not sure, cuz we haven't looked into it, we've gone through temp agencies and we've gone through. The messenger.
And with these, with these positions, we want someone more local.
And, and we have to advertise, I think for it to be legal, we have to advertise in three locations, three public locations. So the messenger, or, yeah. Yeah, the messenger takes care of two, because they have the paper and the internet, so.
And we have Lance on the main uh, drag out here with a bell.
With a stick.
Town criers are third, so we're saving.
Job opening.
Five hundred.
Go five hundred for a one-time run?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll figure it out, we might have to.
The problem is, is we have a lot of, I think we have a handful of local people.
Right.
We didn't the last time, so.
We had some folks who said, come back to them if, if the next spot opens too.
Right.
So.
ATV stickers, we budgeted a hundred, spent fifty. Keep it at a hundred?
As an odd uh, comment, Fairfield's uh, advertising for a position. Uh, in their town offices on Facebook.
Which, which we put ours on Facebook too.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, so we can. They had a nice, nice advertisement.
Yeah, they have their ladder head and everything, yeah, I saw it. Um, a hundred, ATV stickers, we can leave it a hundred.
I agree. What's, uh, that was Marky CDL?
Uh, yeah. So.
Anticipate that again?
Well, it's, it's a.
I keep working.
It's a three-year renewal.
His mind's up this year.
So.
When's the Allen's?
Yeah.
I don't have a clue. So we should at least put in two hundred.
Everybody, they always pay for money.
Cuz if. And you decide to take that. Hire someone we may, you know. Be the matter when their renewal is up. Yeah, I think we should do two hundred to be safe, because we don't know when Allen's is up.
Well, it's easy enough to find out.
Yeah.
We just need to ask him.
I agree though, well.
We should have known that when we hired him.
When is expired?
I don't remember that question, somewhere in my notes.
I don't think two hundreds that far out of the, the realm. E- even if they're ninety bucks, if you get two of them.
Fifteen percent, remember.
Did that? That's still two hundred bucks to cover it, two of them. Building allotment is still fifteen hundred, that one doesn't change.
Contracted labor, that was.
So. We don't have contracted labor, we have that up in the salaries area.
No, you got it. No, we had it under bills, we budgeted ten K last year.
Right, but what I'm saying is on the. No, what?
Clothing.
On. Go to the other paper, to this one. So like I said, this, this is. Not as ideal as it could be, because we're working off two papers. Culvert pops up next. Sorry, contracted labor pops up next here. Right, and we put in ten thousand, we spent none.
Think that was like when we had Hardman or John.
Right. What about moving the escalator? So contracted labor, I mean, obviously that didn't get taken out of there for moving equipment at this time, otherwise we'd have numbers out.
Yeah.
But I think contracted labor, we could cut down to five thousand. And use that for moving equipment.
Yeah.
Probably less than that, but we can work with five to start.
See how it goes, cuz you might, you might.
Contracted labor. That's.
Hopefully, in the meantime, we'll find a trailer that we can purchase somewhere.
So on this one. Um, ladies and gentlemen, it's under salaries, the second one.
Which one?
This is the, this one, but the roads right over here. So, right there, upside down, right here, upside down.
Yeah, that's.
So under in salaries.
In second person?
Yep, contracted labor is down here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's why I said we're kinda jumping around a little bit, cuz it.
Five thousand in there?
Five thousand there, and again, that's for the movement of our excavator. Uh, Culvert's budgeted five, didn't spend any according to this.
I would keep it where it is though.
Keep it at fives.
We spent part of it to fix someone's. Line down below. We should really.
Five. Yep, we're keeping it at five, keep it at five thousand. Dental and vision. We budgeted fifteen seventy-six, but I think that's something we're gonna have to get from Vera or Tammy.
Correct.
Because it's a.
Be Al has insurance, both of them through his wife, so he won't be on that.
So that's why I mean, I think we need to get, uh, we'd have to get it from Tammy and.
But for right now, I mean, if you left it the same, you'd know you'd have more.
So if we left it at fifteen hundred, we'd be good.
Cuz I, I'm not sure how much it is, it's not, actually the.
I think the reason we did this last time, we budgeted fifteen seventy-six, is because it was like five and a quarter for the year per person.
Okay.
So if we put fifteen hundred.
For dental and, that's a lot.
For the whole year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a ton.
Only like.
That's per person.
Vision is in the warrants for tonight, I believe.
Five hundred dollars per person, that doesn't seem.
Oh, it's in the warrants tonight, he said.
The, the vision is.
It's so cheap.
Oh wait, we pay full, right?
Yeah, we pay the full. I'm at thirteen.
For how many though, Josh? It's, I think it's thirteen apiece, I, I pay for my wife.
Well, I think we only have one in here.
Thirteen fifty-seven, thirty-four?
Thirteen twelve.
I mean, that's what we paid out this year. So I don't think budgeting fifteen is.
I think fifteen would cover it.
Yeah.
Especially if we're going down in employees.
Hmm, but if you pick up a new one, who may want it?
Right, right, so we have.
That was the other difference, was the fact that Dan was on it, so.
Fifteen hundred should be sufficient. Disability insurance, we budgeted two fifty-two. We didn't spend at all.
Disability insurance.
Oh, sorry, yes, diesel.
Well, it's not on the.
It would be under fuel.
So we budgeted two fifty-two?
Yeah, we spent two seventeen.
So unless it goes up significantly.
That's right.
Since disability expenses.
Yes, disability insurance.
Three hundred, one hundred for each employee.
Yeah.
Three hundred?
Yes, three hundred, Richard.
Trying to guess what it's going to, that's the problem.
Ditch and drainage supplies. So ditch straw, mudstone, budgeted ten, spent thirteen, is that a fifteen thousand dollar?
I would say, I would say at least because.
It's, we have a.
We used our stone that we had left from last year already this year.
And we have an excavator, so we don't have to do it on a timeline.
Right, but.
We could do more of it.
Mudstone was mudstone.
Okay.
The ditch.
So that's fifteen thousand.
The ditch straw and that, so if we do stone lining, you're gonna have to buy the stone, and then probably get reimbursed by the rent. But, if you do the uh, hydroseeder, it, it, that takes the. Whatever that.
Yeah, the special, yeah, so fifteen thousand would be sufficient.
That's what I wrote down, yeah.
Okay. Electricity, we just have electricity as one. So we budgeted six hundred for north, twelve hundred for south.
Yep.
Terry, any input on that?
What should we use, what does it lay the?
We went up, so we had eighteen hundred and we have.
For, for the north. Six, we spent four oh eight.
Right.
The south station, it was uh, twelve hundred and we used eleven oh six.
Go up to fifteen. So six and fifteen, twenty one hundred.
Six and fifteen.
Twenty-one for the two.
Twenty-one hundred for the pair. Equipment chains.
Do you think it's going up, Terry? Obviously.
Probably.
You're closer to that and we are, so.
Yeah.
Equipment. Oh, with all the. What's equipment chains? The trucks?
I think we probably bought chains one year for either the truck.
We got enough this year that we did not buy them this year.
Okay.
So far, we haven't used.
So zero it.
Is that?
Where are you at?
Uh, equipment chains.
Chains after electricity?
On this one.
Oh, I don't have that one.
Equipment chains, it's on one and it's not on the other.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just going by.
We didn't budget anything. Spent three thousand.
You know why we didn't budget anything? Because we put that in to probably new equipment.
Either that or shop expense.
Or shop expenses.
Okay. That we should remove equipment chains from.
We shouldn't remove equipment chains from this one. Equipment earnings would not go on here, that would go on. Uh, receipts. So that one can be stricken also.
So you get.
Yep.
Equipment diesel, and it's just called diesel on the other sheet.
Well, cuz equipment diesel and truck diesel. Oh, they have the same thing for you guys?
All on.
You run clear on the, on the equipment, okay? Um.
So.
We did thirty-five?
This equipment gases.
Yeah, equipment gases.
Gases for like this, this chloride sprayer or the.
Why do I not have? Thirty-five. The thirty, thirty-five is sufficient, figuring that. As I said before, I figured the fewer prices are gonna go down.
Probably will, yeah.
So thirty-five thousand for diesel. And that brings us to equipment gas, put in a hundred, spent sixty. Leave it at a hundred.
Just because you got, the hydroseeder's gonna be more operation.
Yeah. Equipment repair is its own thing now.
Are you on repair rental?
It was repair.
So we should.
We're switching between two sheets, it's.
We were moving the repair?
Yes, alright, equipment repair is its own thing now.
Yeah.
So you're taking it off from this spreadsheet.
Taking it off the spreadsheet. Alright, cause it's something we budget to work.
You have excavators here, but we have equipment something over here, don't we? Uh, we've got a rental over here. All this rental down.
Almost think I would leave the same in case you wanted to rent the mower from Pete's or something like that. We don't have to obviously rent them uh excavator, but.
It's.
What, I mean, you have down below, you have.
Road mowing. So we're looking at here, uh, equipment.
Equipment rental.
Okay, so we budgeted ten.
I almost think I'd leave that one and scratch the. Mowing.
Scratch mowing out.
Cause that was more or less because we were hiring it.
So should we scratch mowing and put equipment rental?
Well, I would, I would just leave equipment rental where it is.
We've got our own.
On the other, on the other page, Josh.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying is this one doesn't have.
You know, cause that would be more of a regular rental for the.
Okay. But that, that would include the roadside mowing. If you rent their machine. So we could scratch uh roadside mowing. And just put. Rental.
Yeah, cause what we, what we do with our machine, that just comes out of normal.
Alright, so we're scratching this and making it just rental?
Is going.
Roadside mowing is being converted to equipment rental.
And leaving it at ten?
Leaving it at ten thousand.
I think that would have charged, would have, would have covered at least two weeks of that. I think he was a little less than that, but I'm not sure where he was.
I thought we only budgeted three.
Uh, yeah, but we uh get rented in for another week with the sale from the.
Okay, so we budgeted six, yep, you're right.
So we're budgeting ten for equipment rental.
Escavator expense. We didn't budget for that. We had two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Think you'll have.
With it being under full warranty like that, should we put five hundred in there for simple? Hydraulic hoses and.
I mean, you could.
Or that could just go under repairs. Yep, so we'll just scratch that.
Did I tell you it was back?
I thought you said blew up, I was like, what?
No, it took a ride to Pete's and, and.
Right, right.
Problem, okay, I didn't know if I told you.
What was it?
Electrical connections. Electrical connections that weren't quite cramped and some green. Terminals in the harnesses, I guess.
But it was under warranty.
Oh, yeah.
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 Alright, so I have. We still got about five minutes to work on this. Alright, grant aid Northwest Regional, we didn't budget any, they charged us a thousand dollars. But we do have, we have a line item for it, do we wanna budget a thousand dollars for that?
That's Northwest Regional Planning Commission.
Right, yes. Yes, that's, yes.
Okay. We should put that on here, though.
On which one?
Just have it as grant aid, not, we don't have.
I mean, it could be Northwest, but it could also be. Others.
Yep. Good point. So on the spreadsheet.
Yes.
We have FEMA work expense, FEMA principal, FEMA lo- locate lock interest.
So we're not, we're not budgeting anything for FEMA because. It should be done and it should just be money coming in, there should be nothing going out.
Are we removing it or are we keeping?
Let's leave it just in case, but. At this point.
We don't need.
We're not budgeting.
We don't need to budget anything for it.
Now we're taking off grader, right?
Yeah, we bought the grader already. That should be removed. All the hundred and twenty thousand. Yeah, what about Gates Skinner Hill?
So if we're gonna do the class four. Road issues that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
We probably should have some gate. Money. Doesn't have to be a lot. We didn't have any. Gate cost last year, but that could also go into.
Are we saying a gate like that goes across the road? Okay, gotcha.
You can't gate a class four though, can you?
Yeah, you can gate a trail.
Yeah.
And if we throw up a class four to a trail.
Okay.
It could be gated.
Yeah.
That was what we ran into on Skinner Hill, now I'm not saying we would, but if we put five hundred dollars in there for gates.
It would be there.
It would be there if, if we needed and we wouldn't be like, oh, where are we gonna pick that up from?
Right, alright. Then we jump back up to gravel, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we.
Nope, that's fine. Nope, it's good. Um, grader. That was a one-time expense.
Right.
And that would typically now go into new equipment.
So we're removing that line.
Which brings us to gravel pit expenses on both sides.
Are we done with that loan?
Which loan?
The gravel pit, right?
I would leave money in that though, in case that. I've got the uh act two fifty permit getting applied for, not sure how much, I mean, I. But I would.
So what you're saying is instead of it being loan interest and loan principal.
Yeah, the.
To scratch that and, and put it under gravel pit expense.
So how much has it typically been ra- running?
He does not know, he hasn't, he hasn't got a clue.
Um, not even a rough estimate?
He said it could be two thousand dollars, it could be fifteen, you know, I mean, I know the first time it was, it was.
Pit expenses for, for the updated act two fifty permit.
If they give it to us and the. Gravel pit expense, I believe is the operating, the uh stormwater permit for the gravel pit.
So that was.
That one's.
Just under eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, that one, that one went up this year from, it was five hundred.
If we do like three thousand? For the two po- potential two thousand. The re- for both. Right.
I'd go higher than lower, I mean.
I think he's saying. I, I think, yeah.
I would say at least, yeah, cause I mean, you're going from thirty-six down to. You know what I mean, you're gonna drop that budget quite a bit right there.
Well, I see what you're saying, is we're going from forty thousand, five hundred dollars that we're budgeting for, down to.
I almost think. Sticking about fifteen. Yeah, just, just in case, because if you're able to get in there and it costs you fifteen and you've budgeted five, then we're gonna sit there and.
Oh, I agree.
Scratch head.
It's, it's.
I mean, it's still going down twenty.
Sound.
Twenty-five hundred, a thousand.
What's it for, though?
It's for the act two fifty permit.
But what's the act two fifty gonna do for? Oh, so that you can go further out?
Right, yeah. So fifteen thousand, does that sound right for everybody? That's still a drop of. I'm good with that.
Still a drop. So the guardrails?
So guardrails we put in a couple of years ago, over by, over by Spritz House. Um, do you see any, know of any areas that would need guardrails?
Prepared?
Prepared or replaced?
One of the ones.
I mean, the one down in the nation by the creek is. Pretty sad shape, I don't know what it costs, I don't know if it worth it. Right where, right where those two eight foot culverts go across the creek.
Oh, yeah.
Pass Ross's?
Past Ross's, up past Cahill's, just the side of Tyrone's. Between Tyrone's and Cahill's.
Oh, yeah, where the, the ones that lay back like this. Look like they could be a road junk if you hit them just right.
It's all in the water there.
Those were, those were uh used guardrails when we put them up and they.
So. Is that how much bigger of an area is that down there compared to what we did over here?
I don't think it's as big.
Okay, so that cost us about. Forty-four hundred, three years ago. Is that a ten thousand dollar allotment? Five? Five thousand?
Be more than. Unless something else pops up and somebody else wants a guardrail.
So do we go in the middle and do seventy-five hundred?
Well, if we go five, if we go five and. Other things don't cost as much, we'll be alright. Do you like that?
Yeah.
Health insurance, health stipend. It is, okay.
You're gonna combine those two and make them one.
Alright, let's make the line under guide glass.
Right.
So note it, this item, it won't matter over here, cause that's as far as we've gotten. Put this off to the side and do our. Thanks, man. Don't go too far, cause we might go and knock out some of this later, you're going to the back of this, back of the. Oh, you've got a water. John, do you want those for the?
Yeah, I have a moment.
Alright. So that's, I gave you those, I made a copy of mine, so you have them, sorry. Oh, I was like, no, it's seven, it says seven right here.
Wow, we still have to stop.
We're on a normally scheduled meeting. There's a couple minutes, so we've paused, we've paused the budget stuff and we'll go left. What we may do, Mac, is we may kick you to the bottom under board business and then pick up with the budget after the road report. Alright.
Lost the agenda. That's your agenda every week, I'm sure I can figure it out.
Do you need another copy?
Oh, I found it.
I'll just tell you what's next. So previous minutes.
Uh, we do not have a form from the, oh, yes, we do.
No, we don't.
Which Terry wasn't here.
Terry wasn't there, cause it was on a Thursday.
Oh, I was thinking the last.
Uh, she wasn't there either. Geez, Terry. You feel targeted? She's on to us. Alright, so after we're for Todd on both of those. Uh, finances. Hop on up. You all join?
Just wired at all?
Oh, yeah, it's wired for sure. Fire for sound.
And Terry hasn't met.
I haven't met you, Terry, is that right?
Terry, yes, Terry.
Josh?
Yep.
And uh.
So, how's it going so far? Who wants to answer that question?
Well, I can speak from my perspective.
Alright, we'll start there.
A lot of stuff to consume, of course, but uh everything's pretty well documented by. Vera, so that certainly is helpful, and I think from our last discussion. I told you, I'm pretty familiar with my way around QuickBooks and stuff, so all the stuff, it's in there. I can go back and see things that might be there from two thousand twenty, so. Yeah, not like I. Haven't absorbed it all in a couple days or anything. Probably the paperwork is more confusing, knowing where every folder, every file, every save, all of that stuff. Computer side things and. You can go on a session with not, would be not here if you wanna hear her opinion of me. So if, if you choose to, but um so. So sorry to.
Uh, basically, I've been doing end of the year stuff. And showing him as many things as I can. The new spreadsheets on the top of every one of them. I have put. Folder and the name of the folder and file and the name of the file, so that if he looks at a piece of paper, he knows where to find it. So he doesn't have to go searching, it's there and he knows where to find it.
Excellent.
That's too easy.
And I'm in the process of. Those sheets I gave you showing what we do for each one, you want cemetery, the library town.
Right.
I'm in the process, so we went into another file and putting page numbers on it. And also adding pages that say warrants, so if he wants to, if he thinks he has a question about those, he can go to that page and hopefully I've got answers there. Deposits. Uh, unemployment, scholarships, anything that we might deal with that, I've got a question on that, let me, I'll look here first and then I'll call you. I just try to make it as easy as possible.
Excellent.
And it's gonna, you know, take some time tomorrow, we'll get checks, so that'll be a good. Good thing to see, cause he hasn't.
And it's good baptism by fire, because coming in in January, I'm seeing. Ahead of month, end of quarter, end of year, it's kind of everything all at once, which is. Challenging, but it's also gonna given.
You came back, that says something right there.
Yeah, yeah, so that's uh within that sense, I guess.
So, you know, it's just a matter of. You know, getting used to my work, I'm leaving. The spreadsheets from this year in my binder, whereas I usually take them out, I'm gonna leave the script or from last year, I should say, the twenty. I'll leave them in the binder, as well as we'll do the new ones at the end of January, and then you can put that right in with it, so you can always look back and say, how does she handle this? Well, that's how she do.
Okay.
Try to, try and make it as easy as possible.
And thank you for your patience in advance for when some number isn't brighter and some's left off. I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one that makes an occasional mistake.
Looking at our paper from the other day, so I'm not sure if Tammy went over this with you at all or no, okay. So do you have that copy that I gave you? So what I did, Vera, there's just things that we. Weren't sure of. I just put a little hash mark next to. Can I give this to her? Uh, I actually have a copy right here. Um, so anything we put a hash mark next to, for example, you know, um ambulance, Todd was getting the ambulance contract. But the conservation committee, they were bringing to us, um, let's see here, let's get to one that actually.
These here?
Yeah, the little hash marks with the.
Okay. You have questions?
Some of them are things that. Like only you can put in. Um, well, um.
Quick books.
Quick, yeah, the QuickBooks, um. Property casualty workers comp. That. That's only stuff that you can.
Casualty. Bill and that's quarterly, uh, quarterly, I think now.
Okay.
So maybe we have that.
So we didn't have that, so there's V L T C, V L C T, casualty workers comp. Vermont tax, comp, workers compensation. List up here, obviously, like the library, the listers and stuff, we're just waiting for them to get to us with that.
Okay.
Um. Employer, FICA and Medicare.
So you're gonna have to take your gross salaries. And then multiply times seventy point six five percent, and you know that that's a total for both of those.
That's the total, okay, I had that written down in one of my. One of my budgets, cause she did tell me that, but I couldn't remember what that.
Seven point six five is, yeah.
Okay.
So I can look at those and see if I can.
Those were just either questions that we had for you or Tammy, depending on which one of the. Which, which way it went, um. QuickBooks, yes, it would be. Unemployment.
For tax. Depends on what we go in, so. Not an expense that you're, it's not expensive so much as it is, the money comes in for that and then goes back out.
So I wasn't sure how we budgeted for that.
Anything in for that, because.
Okay.
We get the money in for that.
Okay. Okay.
Anything that we pay out during tax, we receive the money for.
Okay.
Brings it on the.
Right.
Grand list.
So like the copier lease, we took a, uh, educated guess based off of the contract. There's, it wasn't far off from that, but, um. For the, for the most part, most of that stuff was either ones that we figured are quarter lease that we wouldn't, we don't have.
Of course, it's the expense.
That will come from their budgeted.
Well, that's electricity.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure most all left electricity. If you look at your general fund in your ticket.
Yep.
You might see like the Richmond Cemetery, that's probably what's.
So the general from the third page in. So, I don't have a cemetery, electric, oh, electric cemetery. So we budgeted five hundred, spent four fifty eight.
And that's what's on here, so that's the only thing we paid out for cemetery things.
Okay.
And the weights up there.
Four fifty eight, twenty one, so, this, now is that actually the cemetery or is that the B C C now?
B C C.
Uh, let's make, let's make this phone.
I would like to see us put a little money into that, uh, setup out there.
I agree.
I need some serious work.
Okay, the library expense. That total amount was their share of QuickBooks.
Okay.
We get a bill, quarterly, monthly, monthly, we get a bill for the number of employees. And it, I think it was five hundred dollars for the year. So that is in and out, I mean, whatever that is, the library gave you back.
Okay.
I billed them for that.
And I mean, you don't have to go over all that right now, if that's, you know, if you, if you want to make a note on that, we meet again on Wednesday, if you just wonder. If you want to write on there, you know, in and out from blah blah blah, or, you know, tell us, tell us which one it is, you know, for example, the electricity for the cemetery. And, and we can budget that way. Yeah, and we'll know what, then we can go back through and put that through there.
Okay, so I'll look at that.
That was more or less just the notes than.
I'll ask Kathy if she knows anything about the insurance, since I don't know if we've gotten, I get, remember we paid a bill at the end of the year.
Okay. Okay.
Um. One of the things on here, and I think we'll discuss it. QuickBooks.
Yes.
I don't know what that cost is going to be.
Okay.
Because we do have to upgrade.
Okay.
And I think that you preferred the desktop versions.
Well, only because, again, your decision, I knew your tech guy, although you might old tech people.
You're the one using it though, right?
I'm familiar with desktop version, and I know a number of people that use the online and I have not, just another subscription, really, I don't know if there's a cost difference. It would be easier on me, though, for at least this first year, when I'm trying to learn everything else, not to have to learn a new version of QuickBooks. I know there's some, there's, I don't know for sure, but I've heard varying opinions on people liking or not liking one or the other, it's just the one that I'm familiar with would be a much easier one for the first year, because I can find my way around the desktop version. I use it for everything, including my business that I just got rid of, so that was, that was my only comment on that.
Understandable.
Difference. I mean, honestly, the, the desktop, not, not, there's no difference to, uh, your, your familiarity, I mean, you know. It's all the same, the, the one nice thing is.
What it can do for us, there's no differences.
Right. I mean, I mean, there, he, the difference is you have more security with it in these four walls than you do putting it out in the cloud. That's the reality behind it, you know, you open yourself up to any kind of malicious actors or, or activity when you put our items out in the cloud. It's as simple as that, um, as for cost.
Now, I think right into the desktop is.
Right, i- i- it is, it's a month, usually a monthly fee, um, the laptop we have is fairly new, right?
The laptop, I think, is fairly new.
We don't want work here.
Yeah.
I mean. So long as it can handle that, isn't our, isn't our desktop version, we're, we're being told we have to upgrade, is that correct?
Because after May, they won't be supporting it anymore.
Alright, it's like every two years, they, that's how they get you now, they force you to upgrade.
So it's more secure with the desktop.
Oh, well, that, that's the key. I don't know which, no, I'm sitting here, I don't know which one's more at the moment. I can get quotes on both, but, um.
No, security wise, which one is?
Security wise? You're, you're keeping it within your four walls, it's more secure than putting it out on the web.
So the desktop.
Yeah, the minute you put it on the web, you open it up to them getting hacked and they get all the data.
So if he's more comfortable, it's more secure, even if it is a little bit more, I think it's worth getting the desktop version.
So I don't know what that price is right now. I know we're paying fifty or sixty dollars a month on top of what it costs us for the program and your yearly fee, your yearly fee last year was five hundred dollars, I believe.
Correct.
So we're paying fifty, sixty dollars a month for the payroll thing.
So that's eleven.
Yeah, the hard part is I don't use the payroll service. Because when you sign a warrant, you're, the deductions are already on there, the check that you write at the IRS is on there, United States Treasury. If we let QuickBooks figure it, instead of Kathy figuring it, you wouldn't have that check amount on there. You're not approving a check, which you should be. So it's, so I haven't been using the payroll as far as it figuring the taxes. I've been typing in.
So, could, and this is not something I'm even remotely familiar with, but could QuickBooks figure out the warrant?
Uh.
Or would that mean each individual?
I don't know if you can do that.
Okay.
You'd have to map, right? You'd have to export and map what each thing is.
Yeah, I'm not even sure I answered that question.
Okay.
Because I know the warrants and stuff.
Well, do we have to have the payroll piece?
I don't know if we can, if we can do manual payroll, then we wouldn't have to pay for that every month, because the manual pay, I'm typing in social security, Medicare, um, federal, state.
You're not using it anyway, so we're.
I'm not using it to figure the taxes, no.
Okay. So I guess that would be something to look into. If we can do it without having that, then by all means, we'll cancel that portion, um.
And I'm gonna do it the first time tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right, so, so not that I might have any impacts, but.
If next year, at this time, you go, hey, I think we could really use that, um, my guess would be as long as we keep up our subscription, we can add or drop
Oh, I would assume.
Different parts to that, right?
And it's different here, as Vera has explained, like with my own company, I always use the QuickBooks payroll and let it do all the calculations.
Right.
But as I understand it, you've got to have all those broken out to approve them here as a warrant.
Correct.
So it's kind of like, well, you can't do this before this, so I'm not really sure, but you might be right, maybe you don't need the QuickBooks payroll subscription if you're not using it, unless you need it for W twos or anything, but you're doing those mainly, right?
Well, so long as it prints out the reports we're getting out, the summary.
Right, the totals.
Yeah, that's what I use for.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that we still do that. Next question is, if we don't have to figure them, we'll do the sheets, we'll do the summer, all summary and all those as well.
That's a question to ask QuickBooks.
Yeah, so.
And, and I don't know, are we getting that through, uh, SimQuest or some other M S P, or are we going directly with QuickBooks, yeah? Yeah, it's the best way to get that. Well, you're, right, you're gonna, you're gonna pay a, probably a ten to fifteen percent markup on that, uh, if you get it through some other provider.
Into it.
As I'm curious, see how this is done manually, so that it, you know.
It's really not that hard.
Never seen it done manually, so that might be.
And when you're doing it, if you're worried about, oh, did I put them in the paycheck, right? Well, when you look on the warrant, this is how much you're supposed to pay the IRS. If you go to the payroll liabilities and your amounts are different, you know you messed up something on it, because they should be exactly the same. That and state tax, so, you know, you have a double check there, so.
Can I ask, uh, just looking at the warrants, can I ask you a question? Is there a reason we are not getting our invoices via email? Why are we doing paper copy? Because I can tell you right now, we're paying for paper copy, we consolidate, it's five dollars a month to get a piece of paper mailed to us according to the bill.
I don't.
We should, we should.
Buy email sometimes.
We should let, make sure it's all coming electronically and avoid these service fees, because it's, it literally, it's right here, it says they're charging us. They call it under the long distance section, and it's stupid, I didn't even realize it, and I was looking at something else, and I'm like, what's this fee? They're charging us, they're charging us five dollars for paper invoices. Five dollars a month, consolidate it, this is the road, max, five dollars a month for paper invoices. We can get it sent via email to the town of Bakers, uh, your email address, town clerk.
She's the one who does the warrants.
Right, we can print them out, you know, I mean, you know, it's as simple as that, if we need it.
You mean it costs us seven cents instead of five bucks?
Well, yeah, seven, seven tenths of a cent, seven one hundreds of a penny.
Oh. That was our last meeting.
Yes, hang on, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Terrible.
I'm a bad person.
Fired.
Um. The other stuff's from, so.
Okay.
Right.
Any other questions for me?
I don't think so.
I think, well, you know what, like I said, Tom's taking in a lot of stuff at the moment, and today we worked on trust funds to see those sheets, that's kind of the confusing one, but as we go, I'll, I'll be in here with him to start with, so that he can, you know, first thing he sees, you know, first time he sees it, we'll work on it together and.
I did have one other thing with the warrant, and it's just something that was brought up earlier at the six o'clock.
We haven't, we haven't seen the warrants yet, so you're, you're on your, no, well, just, you're on your own on the question, I just.
Well, just, we're paying back in the crew fifty six cents a mile.
Yeah, that's been for a long time.
Right, I was just wondering if we're gonna.
I would imagine if we do that, it'd bounce the board.
Yeah, we. Exactly, I'm not saying, yeah, it's just saying.
Right, we'll do, we'll talk about that when we go on, on the budget.
Yep.
Just making note.
Okay, so we'll sign it off on this one then.
Yeah, I.
Uh, I still have questions for Mac, here you go. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
I have one last question for you, I don't know if this is in the right place for it, but we haven't discussed, uh, like vacation, I had this vacation already booked for the end of February of this year, where in the future, you can kind of work around your busy times and stuff like that, what I didn't know if, I, and I can send you an email, it doesn't have to be part of this, I need a lot of stuff to do, but just what or how that might work, I don't.
So.
For too many vacations, but occasionally.
Um, we're talking a week, we're talking a month?
Yeah, I mean, rarely, we, yeah, never.
No, no, I mean, the one, the one you have coming up, obviously, but.
Uh, that's a week, that's a week.
That's a week.
And school calendar, because my wife's a teacher, and my kids are in schools around, they're all on the same calendar.
Right.
This one was already before we even talked, a couple of weeks back.
Yep.
This has been.
So.
Flights and such for.
Looks like you're staying home.
Well, I haven't signed my contract, because my, 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 my question, you before you left. Yeah, so I was gonna sign my contract, I, I was kind of joking about not signing it, if I get a week off, and so, that's happened.
Is it the, the week of the twenty sixth, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's like twenty fourth is a Saturday.
Yeah.
It is one of those weeks where you're doing.
We're doing a meeting, but.
Yeah, it's one of your, the second Tuesday, so it's one of your key weeks, I call it.
Yeah. So, I guess the expectation there would be. Um, do you print the checks out at this point in time, or that's, and that, I'm just wondering if the prints, if the checks could be printed. John is still the second signer, but there would be the issue of having the checks printed at all, right?
Yes, or somebody would have to, this is an option, this is an option I gave Porro when she was my assistant. If you're not comfortable going on Peachtree and doing the checks, write them out manually, take copies of the bills, send them out, we'll put them in the computer after. It's an option.
So.
But I, yes, I, when the warrants are signed, yes, I put them on.
So I guess my expectation, or the anticipated expectation would be that you would have talked with a second signer, John, and had that lined up just before you go. Yeah, before you go.
And I know it would be busy times, so it wouldn't be January, it wouldn't be something like that, it's just the idea that it can be done.
Yep.
More than anything, I mean, working together to make sure it doesn't cause too much confusion.
Does I.
I would even reimburse the town for extra expense if you had to bring in someone else that covered.
The only problem is to check around Tuesday, I didn't come and sign it, but I don't know how to run the checks, I, I don't.
That's what she's saying, is you could actually take the warrants and sign handwritten checks.
Oh, I could, I could write out the checks for each individual. So we would have the warrants by Friday, done for Friday?
No, the warrants, Kathy does them the Monday.
Kathy would do the warrants, not, okay.
Kathy does the ones anyway.
Okay.
You sign on Monday night and then go on the Tuesday usually.
Alright.
For this situation, if you wanted me to, I probably won't be a signer at that time, but I could come in and do the checks if you wanted me to, for this time.
And I could sign.
And then you need to figure out what you're gonna do after that, you really need assistance.
Well, I can, I can handwrite the checkout, I mean, that's not a problem, I don't have the check.
So, at this point.
Checks are in the safe.
At this point, if we put this between the three of you, we can get it done to come up with a solution. Whether that means you come in and print off the checks and we pay you for your hourly rate as temporary assistant treasurer.
I wouldn't sign anything, I would just put them in the.
Right, you would print them off and John would sign him as the second signer, or, or if John wants to do it by hand, I'm gonna leave that.
Okay.
We have, we have the group of people here that that affects and can make that decision, and I feel like you three are completely capable of making that decision.
We'll get it done.
Yeah.
Okay, so long it's okay with the board that I can get into the checks, if that's what he chooses.
Um, I'll, I'll call a vote, is every, everybody who's okay with their coming in to print off checks and John, being the second signer, sign those checks if need be, on the date of February twenty sixth. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go, it is, it's, it is official now.
Do it, I should be around as far as I know.
Perfect. In the future, yeah, we can coordinate everything in the future, and I don't need to, usually take up, take in a week or anything.
No, it's perfect, it's okay, we get it.
But it's often.
I put him above, actually. Person, but thank you. Um. Just to jump back, we're gonna jump back to previous minutes. I make a motion to accept the prior meeting's minutes as presented. So, prior, prior meeting minutes being twelve twenty eight and one four.
Correct, both, both meetings.
I second. You second that, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor that were in attendance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vote passes three zero. Alright.
Are you taking notes on that, or?
Yeah, terrible notes, but I'm speaking into the microphone clearly.
True.
Alright, there's that, there's that. Mr. Gratten, step up to the hot seat, sir. Uh, you need. Four minutes, four minutes and fifty seconds.
No, no.
I don't hold this time, so.
It's not timed. Is your mic on, is the green light on, okay, good.
So I'm gonna start out with a bunch of questions, I guess.
Do me one quick favor, can I just state your name for the record?
Uh, Corey Gratten.
Thank you.
I don't know you.
Sorry.
In second grade, so, I know.
No problem.
Um, so I just have a bunch of questions. Um, and for the record, I don't have Facebook, so none of this is coming from the crap that I talked about. A lot of these might be for you, you know, I'm looking this way, don't consider to beat that player. It's not many. Actually, I should for them. Um, so my first one is, do we have a culvert policy? This car is, uh, starting out, let's say new building, curb cut. Who pays for the culvert? Who puts the first one in? Do they, you know, where I came from, it was you applied for a curb cut, you paid for the twenty five dollar curb cut, and then it was up to you.
So.
I don't know.
What are, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mac, what, uh, understanding has always been.
Yep.
Is that the initial culvert was on the landowner?
Yep.
And after that maintenance, since it's in the town right away at that point, is on town. As they see needed.
And as far as, so they don't have to apply for a permit to have it.
Mixed.
Yeah.
Just curb cut or anything like that, but they call it.
Yes, yes, your first one, you have to apply for the permit, the road access, road access permit, and you have the initial fee for your first culvert.
Yeah.
Um, it comes to Mac. Mac will do a site visit and establish, because our minimum right now is an eighteen inch plastic. But that can be changed, you know, if, say you've got twelve inches to ledge, or you don't have much water, and Mac says, you know, they could put in a swale just before the road entrance and they'd be fine.
Yep.
Um, and he'll make those notes on the permit before we sign off on, they come to us, we sign the initial, goes back to Mac, you do the work. Mac comes back, says it's up to standards, you're good to fully approve this one, we sign it, it goes in the folder.
So then after that initial, all that, it's up to the town to maintain it, and if.
Yeah, as they see needed, yep.
So have we ever thought about changing that, so that way it's all on the landowner?
We have, it's, you know who doesn't like that?
I know.
It's not written.
That's, that's been the, that's been the understanding.
It's been the understood.
Just for, I mean, I know you guys have probably been around, around this, but.
We don't, we don't have a written policy.
Yeah.
We don't, and that's one of the things Todd's actually been working on, is different policies for different things that we're missing.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we have standards, we write a policy of standards for minimums, whatever.
So you would, what you would like to see as a taxpayer of Bakersfield is that all, any and all cost and repair fees would be on the landowner, who's.
For more, for more than one reason, if it's your house, you're responsible to get to your own house. If you can't take your own culvert, you shouldn't want a house. That's the way I look at it, and we're taking away from small business owners that are paying, or may, trying to make money by changing culverts. And, I mean, do we get our culverts at state costs?
Yeah, uh, we get them at a discounted rate, yes. So let me then ask you this, so say a culvert on your property just you as.
Yeah, I betcha.
Uh, is in the middle of a fairly substantial hill.
Yep.
Plugs up due to your inability to maintain said culvert.
Yep.
And washes out the town road. Who's, who's liable?
The way I look at it is if that culvert is plugged up and I can't unplug it, the town has every right to come dig it up to get the water flowing, so it doesn't damage the road, because the way I look at it, the road crew is responsible for road safety, so if the road isn't gonna be safe, it's gonna wash out, they have to do what it takes to keep that road safe. My opinion.
So, okay, so what I'm saying is like, some of these storms we've been having.
Yep.
Water comes up quicker than some of them can handle it.
Yep.
Say it's not even fully plugged, say it's partially plugged.
Right.
Can't handle the water, water comes up, wipes out the road. Gravel road, obviously, but.
Right.
You know, that's the only, that would be the only time there would be gray area.
No, I get that, but as far as just replacing people's culverts.
Yep.
We, I mean, I worked for them about it for thirteen years, and we had a, didn't have a culvert policy, it was kind of like like what you guys have here, and we spent two summers just replacing culverts, and we lacked on our road maintenance.
Yep.
And we got backed up so far, it wasn't funny, which cost more money, the roads went to crap, you know.
People complaining, yeah.
You, you're never gonna get by that.
Yeah.
You can get by that.
I said more.
But that's all, I just, I don't know.
It's, that's a great question.
And I don't have Facebook, but I hear a lot of complaining and I'm just trying to get.
Um, not so much about, well, I mean, we had one culvert complaint, but.
Yeah, but just, there's a lot of complaining, go in the store, get a coffee in the morning and you. Yours will be bleeding.
I, I quit drinking coffee just for that reason. Nice.
Um, so yeah, this, my curiosity was. As far as doing a, something like that, like. I'm all for selling culverts to taxpayers at our cost, at the town's cost, because why not? But giving them a culvert, that makes no sense. I don't know what they cost now, but I can remember. Four or five years ago for an eighteen inch, twenty foot plastic culvert was two hundred and fifty bucks.
Well, it's more than that now, I think, you're looking at about seven fifty, I think.
So how do you justify giving somebody a culvert and putting it in and doing all the work?
Well, that's, yeah, that's where it comes to, uh. Basically, road commissioner's discretion, you know, I mean.
Right.
So, yeah, no, I can clearly understand where you're coming from.
I guess I'm asking questions, but I'm not pointing fingers. Um, and do we use, we use plastic on the roads too? We used to, I know sometimes like.
It depends on.
Yeah. And, I know the gray ones are, I put a lot of covers more plastic than metal, but. I know as far as plastic, they're smooth board, so they don't blow up as much, especially freezing up, if they do freeze up.
But even the black ones are smooth born.
They are, but they're, depending on your coverage, if you only got ten inches of coverage.
Yeah, no, without it else, yep.
Like I said, I'm just asking questions, just.
Uh, what, so we're, we're reverting back to steel for the most part, yeah, so. Yep.
Yeah, cause I know like, I'm pretty sure the gray ones are like.
They're.
Eight, ten inch minimal coverage, because they're. They're structurally, cause we used to put a lot of those wherever the driver's trucks were going a lot or.
Yeah, yeah, their, their crush rate is a lot higher than the blacks are.
Wicked difference as far as freezing up, plugging up, just because they're smooth board and I don't know. Todd might be the one to tell you this, but we used to get along with the fire department and have them come when they could and flush culverts in the spring or, you know, in the summertime. But when the spring was done and you could, it would just blow stuff right out of them and you had your flow back.
So where would that go, just from an EPA standpoint?
Right where it's gonna go if you got a heavy waterfall.
Move the culvert.
The fire department blow water down a drain, but that's just me because. Uh, uh, culvert, they don't want me there.
Well, if it's plugged up with dirt, what else are you gonna do?
Dig it up.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
You're gonna dig it up?
I wouldn't dig it up.
I mean, I, he, he's absolutely right, there's nothing wrong with it, it's, it's stream bed material anyhow.
Right.
It's going down.
Plus.
I know we don't, you guys are volunteers, it's not like we had full-time guys, so it was nice to have that.
You gotta be careful.
Excuse.
Alright, next, I'm gonna try to make this quick, so it's almost on the bad time, uh. So my question, our equipment replacement plan, as far as that goes, is it. Each piece of equipment have its own replacement plan?
At this point, the only real replacement plan we have is pretty much on the trucks, um. As far as the other equipment.
Yep.
Um, I'm not sure. And I mean, like, you were probably working, but, uh, town meeting days.
Yep.
Um, right up until. Well, last year when we bought the grader, any year before that, we talked about replacing the grader, we were met with a resounding, you can still get parts for it, keep running it.
No, no, I did, I, that's what I said.
Yeah.
This all not worked, but.
Yeah, as far as the trucks have a replacement plan, the other stuff is pretty much. Right, I thought, uh, how, how, how much longer can we get out of it if, uh, Mac or the guys think. Hey, it's on its last leg and it's time to start looking, then we do.
So what's, what's, what are we for our trucks? Is it ten years or is it?
Uh.
Trying to get a little less than ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, trying to get a little less than ten.
For, for instance, he's pricing out the next replacement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's, uh, a year plus in advance.
Oh, yeah.
And we, and we just replaced Max, not last year, year before, right? And that one was thirteen years old.
Yeah.
So.
So that's what I'm just, I was just curious as far as this equipment, if it's, so pretty much the trucks are replacement.
Trucks are replacement and we try to get as much as we can out of them because.
Yep.
Who wants to bite off another, what was, what's this one coming in at? Hundred and, or two something, right?
You, you plan for what you can, but every once in a while it turns around and bites you, yeah.
Yeah.
It's almost, this truck replaced the last year we had it. It cost us more than the, the truck payment would have been, yeah.
That's why, obviously, it's, I, I came from a different type, bigger budget town, but smaller town, but it's nice if you could. If you can make it, so okay, we're gonna get rid of this one now and we're still gonna get. Twenty grand for it to help with whatever, but like I said, I'm just curious, just trying, this is from my knowledge, um. So. The only thing being that in the equipment replacement, does that have to be voted on? Anything, just the trucks?
So every year, we vote to put in, is it ten or fifteen into a new equipment fund?
Yep.
Um, the last acquisition of equipment came through the ARPA grant. Because it was equipment that we had been talking about.
Yeah.
And government wanted to give us money, we had to use it for certain things.
Yeah.
That fell into it, offsetting the taxpayer cost for equipment.
Yeah.
Talked about. So the grader and the excavator both came out of that with some help from the new equipment fund.
But, so maybe it's just. What I'm saying is, like, when we buy our trucks that are in there.
Oh, yes.
We have to put that on the ballot, okay, we're buying this truck and we have to get permission, or is that just because it's in the equipment replacement, it's in?
Yeah, we've pretty much, it's just been in, in the six years I've been here, Lance, how would you say that that's?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, fifteen thousand in the new equipment fund, how would you say that's gone, Lance, since you've been here? If the town needs a new truck. Is that put on the ballot as shall the town purchase a new truck with?
Used to be. Uh, now it's just, uh, it, it comes out of the equipment fund, we've had, it is. Uh, it's gradually changed. Um, we used to put money aside. Uh, for equipment repair and new equipment and.
Yeah.
We, we've consolidated some of these funds. Um. Recently, we've had enough money to do the down payment.
Yep.
With a trade-in.
Yep.
And we just continued on with the equipment fund.
Yep.
Which is paid for, uh, as many as two truck payments it wants and. So right now we're down to one, we were two last year.
Yep.
Short answer is no.
So that.
It's not voted on, it's.
Okay, that's.
Basically, the way we talk about it when we're doing the budget, is it's kind of seen as like a non-negotiable.
Yeah, that's all I was curious about. Um, so, and I don't want you guys to think I'm pointing fingers and saying you guys did stuff wrong, I'm just asking questions.
You can, sorry.
You. So, as far as the excavator goes. Is there a reason why we did excavator instead of backhoe? And I'm just asking.
This is part of the kitchen.
Yep.
I mean, mobility back order is nice, but it's part of the kitchen.
And I, I agree, I just have questions.
That was, um. Yeah, that was pretty much it, we were talking about ditching and, uh. Culvert replacement.
Yeah.
And it's like, you can do a lot with a backhoe, yes, but you can do.
You can.
You can do more, I wouldn't say more, you can do. More, you can do it quicker with an excavator.
Yeah.
You know, we could replace probably. Three culverts in the time it replaced one with a backhoe, just because of the way they're designed and the way they're set up and they're. Now is there mobility?
You're renting.
And we're renting an excavator every year, so we had that added cost, um.
So my only question, I guess, Senator, a couple of questions is. I, I agree, it's way easier to ditch and fast than anything, but how do we move that piece of equipment without getting someone to move it?
So we are actually looking into a trailer.
Okay.
Um, we have been looking, um, we had, we had one, um, I mean. We were, what'd they say, ten minutes, ten minutes late? Town of Underhill had one, so what we're doing now is we're kinda. Waiting for the right one, cause I can't, uh, personally, this is just me speaking, I can't see spending sixty thousand dollars. On a trailer to move an excavator five, six times a year, um. If a nice used machine trailer comes up and we can pick it up for, you know, half the price of a new one. It would be worth it, at this point right now, it's probably costing the town about three hundred dollars each time we move.
Yep.
You can move a trailer a lot of times before you pay for a thirty thousand dollar.
For sure, I just.
Yeah.
Different theories that I was thinking about and like I said.
Yep. These are totally things that we thought about.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm, I'm three hundred hours behind all these conversations, I'm just asking. Because to me. Ditching with a backhoe is garbage, don't get me wrong, but middle of a snowstorm, if your loader shit's bad. If you've got a front end loader, how are you gonna load your trucks now? I'm just saying, if it happened, I don't want it to happen, it's just stuff.
Worst case scenario, we could, we could, we could put the excavator on top of the pile.
Yeah.
We could have seen it done.
Good.
Um, you know, same thing in the pit, if something was to go down.
Yeah.
And we had to haul material, we could load it with an excavator.
Now, or do we ever plan on expanding the garage and all, maybe?
We've, we've talked about that, it's not been.
Cause you, I wouldn't say it's. So much equipment over there for someone's gonna start backing in and stuff.
Yep, well, that's why we've, we have the pit, you know, and if it's something that's not, you know, like if they're not using the excavator, they, they send it to the pit, you know, cause it's out of.
Be great to put it inside.
Out of sight, out of Maui type of deal there, too.
Put it inside.
It would be, um. I think, what did I talk with?
He asked me that.
James asked us that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if we had any intentions of building a new.
Yeah.
No, if we could put the excavator in the north.
We're locked out.
No.
I bet, I bet you're lacking about three feet.
Yeah, I was gonna say. That's, that sits up there.
How tall is that excavator? It can't, it can't be much more than ten, twelve feet.
I bet.
Trailer, you're gonna be able to fifteen.
Yeah.
No. Well, I'm just saying, and you can't go any higher because you're at your.
No, you're at your, you're at your afterline, yeah.
Unless you put in, and I mean.
Right, and I mean, at that point, if you're gonna remodel that one, readjust this one, you, you're just as good off to go to building.
Right, it'd just be nice to see our equipment, I mean, that excavator, look how long the grader and motor's lasted, okay?
Yep.
Maybe a little over its.
Oh, yeah.
But if we can make an excavator last longer by putting underneath or newer grader, like, you know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm sure we've.
Without a doubt, yeah, um, there has been talk about. Um, looking into what we could do at the town pit.
Yep.
Um, where the.
Off the air of the ball field is.
There's not, because, oh, don't start that, it works, um, there's not at this time, how about that?
We might not.
But we have looked into, we've looked into two different locations. We looked at the town property by the pit where the trailer sits now.
The only good thing about here is you already got your water.
Right, well, the other spot that we looked into was, uh, that chunk of land next to the fire department.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, um, that was, both of those have been talked about. Um, at this point. Again, speaking personally, I wouldn't be ready to bring, uh.
No, no.
A million dollar building to the taxpayers and be like, hey, what do you think?
Taller doors at fire department. Can we make them taller?
Yeah, we got an escalator.
Here?
We got an escalator.
Feel okay with fire trucks down here?
Yeah, we can definitely make the doors bigger.
I know I'm looking at you the whole time.
That's alright, I'm used to it.
Put you on the spot.
I know how you are, I know what you're doing, I feel it.
Put the spotlight on you either, I know you're here, whatever, but just asking.
I don't think he's, I haven't seen him once, so he must be alright, what's next, what's next?
He knows all the stuff out here, I'm here, dude. So now I can go back to the store and shut up, anyway. So graders. This is where I'm confused. Do we like the new one? Why do we have two?
Um. Yeah.
We just, we haven't had the chance.
Yeah.
When did, when did we buy that one, bought that one?
Oh, hang on just a minute, I just saw that somewhere. Two years ago, year and a half ago, year and a half ago, but it went on the previous years. Yeah.
No.
Six months, eight months, yeah.
Why was it, it was back?
Thought it was this spring.
Why did that show up as two years ago on the bucket?
They didn't, we, we didn't, we haven't had it that long.
No, okay, yeah, either way, either way, yeah, so.
This is the first summer.
Twenty-two.
Right, yeah, so my question is, we are. Technically, our equipment. Lineup is for one grader, we have two now, so I'm sure we're still maintaining two. Which the older ones can be the ones can be more likely calling it to parts, I'm sure, cause we still do use it, which is saying they're use it. But if our budget, let's just say our budget is for. Six thousand dollars for the year for maintenance for that grader, but we're putting it into two, our new ones getting neglected because we might be putting into our old ones that we're gonna be selling.
So I'll be honest with you. The time to unload a grader. Is not the middle of the winter.
Right.
Um, what, the reason, and the reason that we kept the old one is because the wing for blowing back banks.
Yep.
Is on the old one.
Yep.
We didn't know what this winter was gonna bring. We've looked into pricing a wing for the new grader. Obviously, the money that we get for the old grader would go towards the wing for the new grader.
Yeah.
But we didn't have a way to wing back banks if, you know, we got that Valentine's Day storm, you know, that gets us four feet.
Yep.
So. Hold on to it till spring, right before graders are a hot commodity.
Yeah.
Unloaded at a, at a, at a high price, that's.
I just think there's a lot, and I'm not, once again, I'm not, I'm not.
Offer to trade it.
No, I know, yeah. Yeah, I get that, you gotta find somebody that's got, rolls like the brands that really wants it and will pay a lot more and get that. But.
And I.
Right.
And quite honestly, if it was to break down to the point where it was gonna cost us.
Oh, we wouldn't.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't rock it. Cause I was just looking to see, um, greater repairs, cause they're in here. And we haven't put, I think, uh.
I'll come with.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not gonna finish that statement, cause I don't wanna break nothing. So the only thing I can see. Taxpayer is, it still says Town of Johnson on it.
He's got the rubber on it.
That's really no good.
You, you, you got us on that, yeah, absolutely.
But that's why I was wondering how long we had it, I knew it wasn't two years, but I mean, hair dryer and. Credit card looks great, pulls off, I don't care if it was mailbox stickers.
Yeah.
Be proud of what you got, Town of Bakersfield all day long. That's, that was my biggest thing.
You're absolutely correct on that.
You know what I mean? That's, that's huge to me, so. Um.
We're gonna have to pull it off the road for a day, though, do that, just saying.
You know what I mean, I mean, we gotta be proud of the equipment we have, it may not be the greatest stuff on the road. To us, that's.
Well, actually, that grader's, it, it, knock on wood, is, is. I've talked to the boys about it and they're really happy with it.
They don't have to wear earlobes. They have a radio, they have AC, that's great, you know, but just take some pride in our equipment, I would just, I think, and put our name on it, it'd be cool.
I think I gave Mac crap for that, like, five days after we had it.
I'm pretty sure if you put a jar on town meeting day, everybody has some money to pay.
We stick it, we stick it in the building.
So the last step I have is just some roadside stuff, once again, Mac, nothing on you. Um. This year, I think, has been the worst one I've seen as far as branches in the road. Or on the edges of the road, I know we had, who was the guy that. Turned everything back. He did great. And we had some, you know exactly what I'm talking, because I know you hung over there. On Egypt Road.
Okay.
That was terrible, like, you meet a car, you had to push over. You push over, I got a sixty thousand dollar truck, yours is not far from that, or probably more. I don't really feel like rubbing branches down every time I meet somebody.
Yeah.
But if my truck's hitting it, when we're plowing the snow, I know that our town trucks are taking it in mirrors or whatever. So, I know we have a chipper, we have chainsaws. And the last, well, the first wet, heavy snow we had this year, there's still branches in the road. Around places where you have to go out around them.
Yeah, Boston Post has got a bunch of them, that you guys must have cut them off and they, yeah.
And honestly, my daughter just started driving and I noticed it more riding with her because she doesn't understand. Oh, I gotta stop, oh, I can't run those down my.
That's because you're on this side of the car.
But you know, it's, it's. We, I, I. I don't know about here, but where I came from, where I work. If you're part of public works, the road crew, your job is public safety. If you're forcing traffic into another lane. That's not public safety, or a walker, or a biker, or if the car has to swerve around a branch. And hit a walker or whatever, it's not. No, right now, this before, like, you can still see one at the top of the hill up here on King Road where a wing would have easily pushed it off the road. But like, Boston Post, I get it. Everything's laying the road, let's go cut it, three weeks later, it's still raving, it's blocked out.
It's not a real good excuse, but.
No, but I mean, it's, it's like I said, we're, it's, it's our job, it's our, we, we can't, lawsuits are expensive.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
We had talked about tonight, putting money aside to rent.
Yes. Like, if you have to, like, when you meet a car, you have to stop or you're gonna run into the branch.
Yeah, well, a lot of that problem stems from the fact that everything's creeping in a little bit. And we've had a problem in the last few years finding somebody, number one, to do it, and finding the money to rent the equipment.
Yep.
Uh, it just hasn't worked out, and I'm, I'm not trying to make excuses.
Yeah, these are broken off and could be, like, I could go and pick them up from off-road, which I do sometimes, because. The way I look at it, my taxpayers pay their salary, why make them get called in, pay them a call in to go move a branch, right, but same point. If they drive by it, like, they were driven by while in the sand. Not knocking you again, Mike, I apologize, I've done the same job you have, but. It's not hard to jump out and throw them under the ditch, or do whatever, the ditch for now, it's not the best place to throw them, but they're not in the road. Like I said, I, I, I feel like the. Town is responsible for safety, the roadway. If you're keeping the roadway safe. I mean, if a tree fell across the road, we would go cut it out of the road, but if one branch is in the road that far, we're just gonna leave it, that's not acceptable.
Would it, a question for Mac. If you got the old grader out, had to wing on it, could you wing back a lot of that stuff? Just, just a question.
And right now, it's not the stuff that's hanging in the road, it's stuff that's broke off, and you could grab and literally throw out, is all I'm saying. That's it.
It's blow down, he's talking about blow down, it's already on the ground.
It's not even blow down, it was cut off, if you, if you dive up, because it was hanging over during the storm, you cut it off.
Not just Boston Post.
No, like, no, but I'm saying that's like a prime example of that, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And, and like I said, I just, any of you guys, I don't care if you have a sixty thousand dollar truck or a five thousand dollar car, you don't wanna run your vehicle down the side of brush. And you shouldn't have to drive off the edge of the road into the middle to stay out of the, the brush. And I get it, I know, I know exactly what you're saying, I'm just saying it's. It's has, it's not just the last year, it's been like the last four or five years, and that guy did great stuff he did, but he never made it down Egypt Road for some reason, which I think was the worst road in the town.
Yeah, because that one we, do we prioritize the roads there, or did he?
We did.
Yeah. Because he was, um.
Yeah, we got him at the end of the season, I think.
Yeah, that's what we did, is we, we basically prioritized it by travel.
What I'm getting at is we have chainsaws and woodchips.
I, yep.
This time of year is the best time to, there's no foliage. It's, you know, yeah, it's a little cooler, so you're gonna stay warm, stay busy. Just saying, I'm like I said, Mac, I'm not trying to be that guy, but, um. That's pretty much. Pretty much all I have, the only last thing I have is behind everyone, there's a handicap ramp. That is not shoveled.
Mm-hmm.
That's terrible, really is. And it's the way it's plowed every time, the snow's plowed to it, and then a little cuts maybe the tractor, so. We spent money to have that put in. I'm not just picking stuff apart, but every time I go by, I see it, and I'm like. Anybody that has a handicap that has to use that ramp is the only way they can get in. And correct me if I'm wrong, if you had to get somebody out here in a stretcher, where are you gonna go?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Well, technically, that's the second handicap ramp.
But it's the second ramp, the one's on the.
So the reason, and I can, because I was on the board then, when that was put in, the reason being. Was so that this room was handicap accessible, no, no, so this room was handicap accessible, while that room could be remained locked. So the main egress for this room is that way.
Yep.
I'm not, and I'm not making excuses, it could be shoveled, it would take ten minutes to do it.
It's, it's still.
The reason that was put in is, yeah.
Going to church, we, we plow up to it.
Yeah.
Instead of back dragging away.
Right. Right, right.
I mean.
Because it had a pile.
It's, it.
That blower doesn't fit up through there, does it? Should have made that a little, should have made that a little wider.
Well, you only had one path to the ramp, so I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Little address.
There's something that should be addressed, I think, because. Honestly, I don't know if insurance came and looked at stuff, they would be like.
Require my box.
I think.
Right.
It's a half inch too narrow.
Supposed to be about forty-six.
Half inch too narrow.
It's a half inch too narrow. So we're gonna go out there and loosen up the screws, they've loosened up the screws so the rails bow out a little bit.
I. I don't wanna be that person, I just had a lot of questions, but.
Thank you.
I want knowledge to learn.
Did we answer?
Kinda, some of them, I, I mean, some of them, I just. I've been late on all the information that's been in the past, I'm not gonna make you guys beat the hell out of it tonight, so, but. Like I said, some of the stuff I was questioning, when you see two graders sitting beside each other, you're like, oh my god, why? That's more money than my book, you're paying more, because you have an extra cost there.
Um, can you do us a favor?
Absolutely.
Go to the copier, make a copy of your list.
Yep.
Yes.
Not really a list, I just did like bullet points. Not, if it's not spelled right.
Check notes on it.
Thing I wrote here that I didn't read was, and I wrote at the end, the handicap ramp, at the bottom, I wrote, that's all I, because I was disappointed in that. Because if anybody here had a handicap person or whatever, and that's the only way they can get in, I get it, there is a ramp there, but.
Yeah.
That, that is the main end. This was.
Second meeting. Water meeting going on out there.
Oh.
He's not ignoring you.
He might have just locked you in, actually.
Yeah.
All right.
If you wouldn't mind making us copy of that.
Changes, I don't need copying.
You sure?
I bought this at Kenny Dr- or Walgreens the other day, just.
Somebody reimburse that guy a nickel.
Like I said, I wasn't. In here, bash and slam and.
No, I understand.
I just. I done that, I did this for thirteen years, and I, when I hear it all day long at the store, now I can at least go back and say.
Now you can go back to the real town meeting.
Nobody has backbone anymore, if you don't come here, it's not a blame, we can talk about it all day in that store.
I, I was just gonna say, uh, I appreciate you coming in. And I appreciate, uh, Jesus, uh, no, I appreciate your honesty and. The way you respectfully brought forward all those programs, problems. No, he's, he's not.
He's not.
He doesn't, he does get mad, when it's not, when it's not handled in a respectful way.
Right.
Everything you did tonight was respectful, I appreciate. I was, I was just gonna say that.
A lot of people, a lot of people don't understand, they like, just feed off of each other.
No, in a little balance, in a little balance like this.
I will tell you, the, the whole, the whole.
Hey, what time, I'll bring mine over, you can do mine too.
Because the handicaps not shovel, I'm just kidding.
Alright, oh, alright, so. You're here for. I thought so.
Bill's here for planning.
Bill's here for planning, yes.
For grants writing, okay. And I think Callan is online, and she's also conservation.
Yeah.
Is she still there? And Larry's here, I don't know if he was.
He's not here for that, he may be here for the conservation.
For the conservation, that's what I thought, yeah.
Because he was at your meeting the other night, that I walked through, sorry about that, by the way, um. Alright, so we have. We do have the paper from Bakersfield Conservation Committee, Conservation Commission. Um. And what you're, okay, this is what Pat was talking about. We have your budget, and we have the proposed for a conservation reserve fund. Please. Yes, sorry.
State your name, please, we know we have Carolyn.
It's Julie Hill.
Thank you. It must feel like you're, you know, on trial or something, right, state your name, it's in the record. Carolyn, if you feel like participating, you can, yes, take yourself off mute.
There we go.
You can't see her, but we can. She's making faces at you, though.
Tell her I said hi.
She can hear you.
Hi, Carolyn.
Alright, so at this point, they gave us the Conservation Commission budget for twenty twenty. The only thing we'll strike from that is it says twenty twenty-five, you're actually on the, you're budgeting for the twenty twenty-four year, because we haven't switched. To a fiscal year. So you're actually budgeting for money that you theoretically could already be spending.
Right.
Welcome to Bakersfield.
That's not how I understand that.
We, we've tried to.
You're on mute, Carolyn.
We've tried to fix that. But it would require the town doing an eighteen month uh budget. And taxes being, yeah, at least eighteen months, and taxes being significantly higher. And that has not been received well, so. Until we can figure out a new way to do that, we're budgeting for the year we're in.
Okay.
So. Um, everybody has this paper, except for maybe Todd.
That's fine, I can move with Terry.
There you go, Todd, they gave us plenty of copies.
Thanks.
Everybody wants to take a quick second, read over that. Everybody make it through that.
Mm-hmm.
So if I'm reading this like, right, you would like. The sum of half of a percent of the total grand list. Half a cent.
It's any que to have them, if you did.
Some homework, you can't really answer this tonight.
So, reading this, you have someone who wants to donate land already?
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
It's in, he has expressed an interest in doing so, they've checked out the land, they've walked it, they've talked to, there's a lot of. Issues to be sorted through, but it's stuff, something that he's interested in doing.
So when you say donate, are we saying at a discounted rate, we would be able to purchase said land, or are they giving us the land wholesale?
I'm gonna let Carolyn answer that one, she's got more background on this.
Carolyn?
Yes.
For some reason, we can't hear you, Carolyn, your mic is unmuted, but it's not recording, it's not projecting. Uh, yeah, our volume was loud the last time I looked, yeah, don't. You blow the hair off, you look at it, night test or blow. No, we can't.
I don't know what she said.
Because she's trying to get her mic working, I can read lips, how do you like that?
It says that I'm unmuted.
As far as I, as far as I understand, he wants to donate the land, I don't know that it's, it's not gonna, I, I don't think it's a purchase.
Okay.
Um, the money would go towards the expenses of dealing with having a town forest.
Uh-huh.
So.
How, how many acres may I?
Sixty-eight acres.
Sixty-eight acres, located.
I think it's on, I think it's on King Road.
King Road.
It's Mr. Dickman, his name is, I don't know if you know.
We reduced the typing, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
So I assume this is forested property.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not on the tax rolls as it is, right? Or no, because it's privately owned, it is on the. Be removing it from the tax rolls, when they donate it, because it would be a piece of town.
Yeah, it would be. A little thousand dollars a year. Yeah.
Okay, Carolyn, you want me to give you my number, you can call, we can put you on speakerphone?
Uh, yeah.
There you go, hang on one second. Let's see, did that work? No, of course not, it would help if I turned it on. Hmm, there we go, one more try. No, oh, yes. There we go, better, bang. Now I say this, let me just make sure I have a charge on this, we're good for twenty-two percent. Yeah.
Yeah.
I assume it's eight oh two.
Wait, who said, say something, Carolyn?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Was.
We got you for about two tenths of a second, I don't know what happened. But you shouldn't curse like that. She's like, oh, now she's gonna curse. Level of harassment is high. Hey, if you wanna put yours up, I'll call you.
He's trying to see your number.
Hey, you, I'll read it off, it's eight zero two, so everyone in town can call me.
You get eight zero three.
I don't live in Detroit, that was a fat finger, oh, poopy, hang on. You had me. I said, oh, poopy, because I don't curse, I try not to, that's a lie, I try not to curse.
Hello?
Where are you texting?
I'm trying to call her.
How'd you get her phone?
Because she called me, but it's busy, it's rapid, busy, hang on. Here she comes. Can you hear us now? Can you say something? Hang on. There you go, it's not booming, but go ahead.
Um, okay, what, what, ask me a question, I'm kind of. Lost my place here.
Well, we were talking about where it was located on King's Road. King's Hill or King's Road, she's got King, she has King Ha- King Road. Is it?
King's Hill, I think. I have not been to the property, Pat Evans has been.
Here, he stopped by and, and, and left earlier.
Um, Mr. Dickman has contacted, well, actually Nancy Patch. Was his first contact, and he's proposing to donate that land to the town. So, there are, there's, um.
Talking house and land, I mean, he has a house back there.
He's got property, we, we're not quite sure. Um. We. According to Pat, he feels like the donation would include the buildings on the land. He has no heirs.
Alright. This is really bad, I apologize, it's not coming through. But we get the gist, they're gonna, they're going to donate the land and the surrounding forestry. To the commission or the town.
To the town.
That will be managed by the commission. Right, it'll be removed from the tax rolls, what, what's being requested for to be put forward potentially. Is a half, half a cent. Uh, a half a penny on the rolls, right? Let me find that line.
Yeah.
Yes.
So he's, so I have to explain.
I think it's.
I wrap my head around this. So he is donating his whole estate.
He has no children, he has no one to lead it to.
But we're, and he's leaving.
He, well, he'll die.
Staying there.
Well, that's part of the, that's part of the, that's in negotiation. I guess they're trying, if he were to donate the land prior to his death, how would that work? How would it be accessed, how would he be comfortable with the access?
And who would pay the taxes on it?
It would be removed from the rolls, that's, so the town would eat the tax.
Convenient.
Yeah, well, so here's the thing, it's, we know what it says here, they wanted, I, I lost my place. It's, it's a half a cent to the tax rate. Endless, it's a big difference. Excuse me.
There, there's a, did you see that Enos did it, I guess.
Based on the grand list. Right.
Two thousand ten, so I don't know what the amount was that they.
Collected over the years.
Ten thousand dollars.
Oh, that, you do have that here, that's the total since two thousand ten?
Yeah.
The town set it up to sunset after five years. Um, I think they, I'm not quite sure, I think they, um. I'm not sure, they might have done it for ten years. Um, they might have reallocated it. Um, and right now, it, it has sunsetted, so they're no longer doing it. You can set it up so that after a certain amount of time, you re, um. You ask the taxpayers again, you know.
Okay. So I think, I think I agree with what's being said down the other end, we're gonna, this is not something to be decided tonight. Do some research. She, you guys presenting. Yep, right, it is. Now, according, the BCC budget included, we, we, off of this one, the BCC budget had. The comfort, uh, also the, the, the town common amount in there, right, for the flowers. Right, was there anything else on that budget? Because it was, they had an exit, they dropped and went. We're good with that figure there.
Yeah, we went through that the other night.
Okay, so we're. Okay. So, um. I'm gonna hang up with you, Carolyn, I think we're done with the questions for you, thank you, and you can listen further, thank you.
The BCC budget that I received from Pat comes in at twenty-two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That includes um dues and fees, pollinator garden, the trails, the town park, and the town common.
That was seven hundred dollars. Six twenty-five, or, I, I don't. Right, the town common, they, they just added that piece in.
Yep.
No, that would be rolled out.
That way, everybody would have all the scribblings on the sides.
Uh, let me just make sure no one else has anything else for you, does anyone have anything else for her?
No, I don't believe so, we're good, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Welcome, sir.
Yes, yeah.
So my name is Bill Irwin, I'm the Chair of the Bakersfield Planning Commission and here tonight to talk about the budget. And. You've actually answered one of my questions, which is. Being confused about. When we'll expend money relative to this budget. Um, it sounds like the town runs, uh, a little bit behind.
A little bit. About three months. From the time you vote on it and about ten months from the time you actually receive the funds.
Yep, okay. So I'll, I'll share our calendar of activities and then you can figure out whether we need to do something. Now or. Later or not at all. Um, cause I'm actually reasonably comfortable with all of those positions. If you are somewhat familiar with the planning process. We have a couple of primary documents that are our responsibility. The first is the town plan and that is currently revised every seven years. It used to be every five, but the legislature changed it to seven, so we're on the first time going to seven years. So, um, it was last revised in twenty eighteen, so we have to have it done twenty twenty-five. And the town plan is approved by the town. Because, and it's typically in a vote in town meeting. As it was last time, and so we would be looking at the twenty twenty-five March. Town meeting for approval of a new town plan. The second thing that we do is bylaws. The bylaws are not actually under any sort of deadline to change them, you change them when. You really feel like it's appropriate based on changes in regulations. And yet, we've had a tendency to change the bylaws. Say the next year after we change the town plan, because you make some changes in the plan and that usually. Reflects some things that need to be done in the town bylaws as well. So that. Changes in the bylaws only require the select board approval, they don't have to come. So we can have an open calendar for the bylaws, so the real focus of our, um, current. Discussion with you tonight into the town plan. And the town plan, uh, can be done best by enlisting. One of the professional planners with the Northwest Regional Planning Commission, which is what we've done the last few times. And we have already been meeting with the planner who's assigned to Bakersfield and she is, um. Ready to start working with us on this. And we believe that it would be useful to get a municipal planning grant to pay for it. And that re- requires a ten percent match from the town. And the total cost for kind of complicated town plan. Is twenty thousand dollars roughly. And for a simple town plan, five thousand dollars. I think it's best to consider a complicated town plan. So the obligation to the town would be two thousand dollars as a matching. To the municipal planning grant. And of course, you folks would have to. Complete paperwork related to that grant application and you've done that in the past and it's never been a problem. I look at the amount of money that's in our account now. We actually have sufficient funds to cover that. Um, we have six thousand, this is in the last town report, we've got updated numbers. But, uh, balance on hand, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, a year ago was six thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. So we have enough to cover our potential two thousand dollars for a matching to the grant. Um, you can see also, um, that our expenses and income are very modest. We don't have a lot, it's mostly postage for notifying various, uh, parties when there's a hearing. And then we have some income with fees for each of the applications. So we don't see any significant changes in the, um. Needs of the planning commissions for the coming year. I just wanted to make it clear that we do have a larger expenditure, we do have a. An obligation that will come to the select board for, that it's a process that will take. Time specifically, what we would like to do is at town meeting this year. Is to announce to everyone that it is a town plan revision year. So that everyone could come to our meetings and talk about issues, talk about thoughts they have, talk about. Problems they consider to be, uh, in need of addressing in the plan. And to also explain some things that are kind of happening at the regional level and at the state level that. Are to be factored into plan revisions, those are currently, uh, looking at things like. Trying to get more housing for people. And then, um, there's also additional work in energy and climate. Um, so those things will probably be the most likely changes for the town plan. Uh, we will then meet starting in, um, March. Through the end of the year to make the actual revisions with the, um. Planner from Northwest Regional Planning Commission onboard with us, we would apply for a grant to pay for that person. So. As much as I like to ask for more money, I, I really have a hard time justifying.
So, what we have in here for you from last year was two hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, you spent three eighty-one. You have the estimated cost of two thousand dollars. My recommendation would be twenty-five hundred. Covers the two thousand dollars, leaves your six thousand dollars alone for operating costs if something unforeseen happens and it needs to be taken care of. And if, I mean, if you're spending three eighty-one, that's just shy of four hundred bucks really, I mean, I don't know. If there's any other expenses that you might incur, but I think a hundred and twenty dollar.
They get expense who might incur would be litigation.
That makes so sense.
And it'd be nice to create, you would be able to keep that six thousand in reserve for that.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask him, where to get this.
Bill, may I ask who you are currently operating with, uh, Northwest Regional Planning Commission?
Emily Klaft.
I thought that was their operating.
Kind of reversed this time though. I said, our rules were reversed this time though.
What that was last year.
Now, can, a- a- and that's just because you had a couple. Agree with what's being said because you know what, one thing we've learned is. You, and we were just talking about this earlier, you get counsel involved, that's, that's one, one and a half. We don't have, a- a- and we're trying to bake it in, in different funds now that we have legal counsel because we've learned. With the couple little things we had in twenty twenty-three, that money goes very, very fast.
Yeah, seven thousand dollars would be about fifteen hours with the lawyer.
They just eat it up fast, it's nothing at all. So, I mean, I agree with Josh.
I, I do as well.
Bill, where's this money? The six thousand five hundred and thirty-three, where did you say that was?
So I actually found it here. Yeah, so I actually. So that makes me. I agree that the operating fund should stay probably around five hundred, so that they. Looking at the fact that they're actually making money.
They get receipts for, I don't, what are, what do you receive the funds for?
It's just an application fee for having a hearing.
Right.
And then I think there's also a fee for the. The plat being filed.
I, I think you're right in the way you were thinking and I, I apologize for speaking out of turn before. I think you, if you were to take the two thousand out of the fund that you have now.
Right.
They'd be at five thousand and just looking at this, they're making about five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, no, I.
And it takes seven years for the plan comes in, that theoretically could be another thirty-five hundred dollars, they could be up near. You could be up near eighty-five hundred by the time the next town plan is due.
And less litigation.
So long as.
In less litigation. And that's the key piece here, I mean, I, like I said.
Their five hundred dollar expense that they've had. For now.
How about we, how about we do, we were just about to do twenty-five hundred for six thousand.
But if they've got the two thousand.
I get what you're saying, I'm just concerned if they get a lawyer, you're not talking many hours in here and then we don't budget for it. So we say, hey.
For what?
The lawyer. We don't have counsel built in in any of our, in any of our groups. Unless we make a large general legal fund for the entire town and put. Money towards it, we, we just did it for the zoning, right?
Yeah.
So unless we decide to make every group.
I don't think planning's had any issues.
No, we've been very fortunate, the, the team works very well, they run a tight shit.
I see what.
Clean.
I can see where he's talking, if, if we split it half with what we put in for tax and half from your reserves that you have on hand.
Right, still losing it six.
I don't, but I'm only one vote. He just told you he doesn't need more. Why are we trying to convince him he does?
Well, I think John's argument, from a perspective of a town resident. You don't have a legal fund, that's one way to build one is.
Not covered under our legal.
To look at any of your.
That's what I was.
Functions where you might have contention. There is possibility of contention with.
Planning.
Planning.
Select board, I think we should honestly, if you ask me, we should have a common town legal fund.
I, that's why I thought we had, but I.
I think what we do is make a fund for it and we fund it with X amount of dollars and, and instead of funding. You know, instead of funding zoning one way and, a- a- and planning and, and, and the. The overall, we should just make one large legal fund.
Is that something you want to do this year? Cause we are in the middle of the budget, if so, we'll give them the five hundred dollars and we'll discuss legal funds.
Yeah, I think, I think really that's the way to go because Bill may not need it.
That makes sense, Bill.
Right.
But a much larger base fund is the way to go, I think.
And just speaking as a. Town officer and a, a member, a citizen of the town. I think you might have some difficulty trying to get pieces out of zoning and pieces out of, um, planning. To pay for legal if you did have legal expenses and you didn't have a separate legal fund. Uh, you'd have to justify that it is genuinely a planning cost or genuinely a zoning cost. So it makes more sense, I think, for you to set up that separate legal fund, I would build it up more substantially. And then.
Fifteen grand, twenty grand.
As far as planning expenses then, we will budget you five hundred dollars. And we will take into account any legal issues or unforeseen legal limitations.
Right.
And when we build the legal budget in.
Yeah, and I'd like to think that maybe the work of the planning commission with the select board led to this initiative to build.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
A, a legal fund.
Yep.
Cause that's what we worry about when we think about the extra money that is there, it's not like.
Right, excellent. Thank you, sir.
Sure enough.
Making, Bill, bring it up.
Hey, Bill, one, one separate question, it's the, uh, the next meeting, what day, do you know?
Yeah, so because of the holiday, on the first Monday, we're gonna be the third.
Third Monday this month?
Yeah, I think we may have said it for that and we'll live with that, I think we all decided that we were willing to come in that evening.
So fifteenth, I, I just wanna put it on my calendar because I never, oh, I, I have it scheduled every Monday, but I wanna make sure I show up.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Okay.
Decided.
Thank you.
Right. Alright.
Thanks for coming out.
You're welcome. We only paid sixty-nine hundred dollars.
You're using that fund.
We noted.
That we've been using that we shouldn't have been using.
Alex's Merck proposal, not Merck, but, uh, actual grant writing proposal.
Because we use the, um, what was that fund?
A lot of stuff going on, right?
No.
No, she didn't.
We'll see it here.
So, do you wanna just give us an overview of what you sent? Push the button, it's off, I'm sorry, Alex, thank you.
Okay.
Our dog loved it. Nice, yeah, excellent, great. Yeah, my wife fed, uh, instead of Christmas cookies, uh, dog, dog does it to me. So hi, everybody, I'm Alex, uh, I just wanted to say that I've been particularly appreciative over the past year of being able to look at a couple grant. Opportunities for the town. Um, I, as a result of the Merck work with John, actually. Formed an LLC and decided that I would try to do this freelancing thing as a small business owner on my own. Um, and, you know, got to do the work with the conservation committee. Uh, my limitation before was that my wife had a crazy call schedule as a, uh, she's a pediatric nurse practitioner, she's changing her job. And roles, still gonna be serving Franklin County here, which is great, um, but that gives me some freed opportunity. Um, to do more, and so, uh, I'd love to do more with the town, even as I was just sitting here, I heard a lot of needs talked about. On, uh, on the part of several groups that, you know, a light bulb went off, well, let's, let's maybe search for some grant funding. Uh, to, to get that done, um, and be, be more proactive, because I think there's money being left on the table. Um, and so I, I sent a draft contract to John, uh, for an overarching, uh, annual, uh, service. I'd love to develop a longer term relationship with you all and, uh, be proactive, go out and search for things that are out there that we could bring to the town. Uh, and, and not have to pull it out of the general fund all, all the time when things come up, right? Um, a new town garage, right, I, I heard that, I heard a town forest being donated, uh, you know, a lot, lots of different opportunities. Um, I bring ten years worth of experience, I, I, I ran a, or it's the main fundraiser for a three point. Two million dollar community center when, before I moved here. Um, anyway, that's it, the contract that I gave to John, I'll give you a chance to look at it in your own time, it's not set in stone. Um, negotiable, you know, I, I'd love to be able to help my, my hometown, I, I am so excited. If, if we would get that grant for that monitoring out there, to what that would do for the town center. You know, I, I would love to continue to work on some projects like that, so that's all I really wanted to say tonight, um, and.
Well, you had sent me, uh, you were saying that possibly you were looking at the, uh, the fee schedule. About how much you would charge per hour for.
My, my current hourly rate is six, sixty dollars an hour. Um, you know, I have to cover my own business expenses and taxes and all those things. Um, and so, uh, I, I can, I can also, we can talk about things like if you want to budget, you know, we've got X amount of dollars. For grant writing services, you know, we could put something like that in the contract where I will not go over that. Uh, or, you know, we can put some, some parameters on that. Um, we could put parameters on, you know, how much time I spend going out and looking for things versus actually writing. Uh, you know, of course, I would, I would want some sort of approval either from you guys or a committee. To say, yes, we do want to go out after this grant opportunity, uh, that way I'm not, I'm not gonna go out and lay the ground on behalf of the town without. A proper approval, it's just not a good business.
And, and just to clarify, what you have presented, which we don't have a copy of.
Yeah.
Is, so that, just so everybody understands, it's a blanket contract.
Right.
So that you don't have to write up an individual contract every time he does one for.
Yeah.
The town or historical society, or it would be a blanket contract used by all the town.
I like the idea that he said would be kind of limit some of the scopes of work, if you will call it that.
Right.
He has an idea of his boundaries, if you will.
Yeah, that's helpful for for me.
And it's helpful for us too.
I might get all taught. I was like, my mic is soft.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think.
So, I mean, it it's a draft right now.
Right.
I'll let you guys consider it uh, and John uh, get back to me or whoever uh, is fine. I'm around.
Now, is this something you're looking for? Like, how soon are you looking for this? Cause I'll be quite honest with you. We are. Straight out until the end of January with budget stuff.
Sure.
Anything extra like? We were supposed to limit the number of visitors we had here tonight, but that didn't happen. But I just, I just wanna be straightforward with you. This may not be something that gets tackled until possibly after. Town meeting day because it could be a different board sitting up here.
Well, I get that. Um, my my thought was to, well, because you got the art considering budget. You know, to think about, you know, are there some grant writing hours that should be included in this year's budget for?
Right.
Uh, for potential opportunities.
Because we do have the.
I'd rather see that than the legal fees.
Yes.
Well, maybe we can get a grant for legal fees.
Yeah, I think that's bad bankruptcy.
I know, they get around.
Yeah.
Thanks for stopping by.
Thank you.
Much appreciate it. Unfortunately, Tammy had a trip planned, so I shot it off a little later, I guess. Get it into this meeting. I apologize, but thanks for coming out.
Library is already here.
They did.
They're they're here. So, um. We are in the middle of roads.
Yeah.
Right. However, Mac is. Trying to turn that on or shut it off.
I'd like to finish the road before we move, but if he's gonna be a half hour, I, you know.
We just step and see if Mac can step back in here.
Yep.
I did get a couple of road complaints about the grader being driven way too fast down Main Street and on the avenue.
Really? The gringer?
The grader.
It's got topped out at twenty five.
I'm just saying, I had a couple.
They're just finishing up.
Okay.
Go into executive session or something? How do we just sit here and stare at each other? Well, just cause.
Yeah, no budget. It's an executive.
Not saying put it in. I'm just saying, we we determined that we're going to pause the meeting until Matt comes in. Are we gonna do a different set of the budget? Um, which is, we've went through pretty much almost all the general, right?
We did last week, yes.
Yeah, we've gone through the general. The only thing we can do is we can look at that.
We do the two emails on there.
Thank you. And we can update a couple of these from this. So the Bakersfield Conservation Committee. Is looking for twenty two. Seventy five, we would put that. So that is on general fund under expenses, third one down. Two thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars.
Two hundred and seventy five.
Two seven five, yeah.
General.
Run that number by me again. Two thousand.
Two seventy five.
Thank you.
Twenty seventy five?
Two thousand.
Twenty two seventy five.
Two thousand two hundred and seventy five. No, that's fine. Um, ballot clerks, we weren't budgeting for. Or we're. Did we need that from? Uh. We need that from. Uh, but uh, ballot clerks because it is a. Um. Wow.
Yes.
It's an election year.
Elections. That's the word I was looking for. Thank you.
So, oh, I bet more than that because you got two, right?
It's true, yeah, forgot that.
So.
Yeah, you're right.
In twenty twenty. Which would have been another election year.
Yeah.
We're four sixty five.
Right.
Really? That's it?
Well.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
But I think since then. That particular group has received an increase. I think they went from twenty to twenty five dollars.
Call them ballot clerks.
The BCA. Um, I think it's partially the BCA and um, the group that comes and sits. Justice of the.
Right.
Whoever comes in and attracts people into vote.
Josh, didn't we, didn't we, when it was you, Todd and I add those, add the the ballot clerks and the BCA expense together? And came up with that total?
Didn't we add them together? So the only problem is, is this year alone, which we only had our local. Our local uh, elections.
Then you said two thousand.
Oh, that's what we did. We did two thousand on the BCA, but we hadn't done the ballot.
Right.
Yeah, but from twenty twenty, you got four sixty five and and twelve hundred.
And we figured eleven ninety two is what it was in twenty twenty for the BCA, so we went to two thousand, right?
Right. So is that gonna need to be more though, is the question because.
I would say you'd wanna put at least six there, looking at, if you figure they got an increase, right? For just the ballot clerk.
So combined two thousand?
No, so what he's saying is we have the BCA expense, which we up from fifteen hundred this year to two thousand, which is right there.
Right.
And then the one just above that ballot clerks. Four years ago.
Was four.
Was four sixty five. He's saying up that to six hundred.
Yeah.
Twenty six hundred.
So it would be a total of twenty.
A thousand.
No, last year we used fourteen hundred.
BCA ballot clerks nine fifty two.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm not getting that.
I I just, we need a better system than all these different spreadsheets. Yeah, so so she's on the very first page of the twenty twenty three expenses.
Here.
You see O ballot clerks nine fifty two fifty.
And that was with one election.
It was two thousand.
So two thousand and then two thousand for the BCA expenses.
Wow.
Geez, we got four thousand dollars in for the election.
So we're doing two and two.
So what you was the very first page? Of the expenses town.
Third page.
But I'm showing where the BCA was.
What's that refund?
Under salaries.
We're gonna just leave that blank.
We don't have the ability to.
We don't know if that's gonna be right.
Nice. So we're gonna put two thousand for the expenses for the clerks.
Correct.
Gosh, what did I send you for the ambulance?
Yeah, we put that in forty.
Forty one two four seven.
Forty one two four seven. Seventy nine.
Seventy nine.
Court tax will be sent through us. Direct tax, we don't set.
Cemetery expense.
Direct tax from the previous year. Oh, you know what? Cemetery expenses.
We didn't do that one, did we?
We have. Residents.
Speaking of.
They didn't, they didn't up theirs at all.
So it's gonna be another five hundred bucks?
Fifteen thousand.
Holy crap, it was a thousand there.
That's reimbursable.
What's going on there?
Right, that's what I'm working on now.
Come to your road, man.
No, I'm sorry. Sorry. Todd, I apologize. Cemetery expense on this one. Cemetery electricity.
Oh, okay.
So that's five hundred dollars.
Makes sense.
What?
Cemetery expense here.
Yeah, that's the electricity.
There's electricity on the one to your left.
Yeah.
And that is five hundred dollars.
That's the good switches.
Well, we think fifteen twenty one we spent.
Right.
Yeah, the timer goes.
We did increase the power though at the other places.
Yeah, that's I think five hundred's enough.
Should we go seven fifty? So cemetery expense, actually, hang on just a minute. Don't put a number in there yet.
Okay.
Terry, you said that the cemetery expense, which is the electricity for the cemetery. Which actually isn't cemetery now. It's actually the town common.
Right.
Needs work.
Yeah, we really should upgrade that to a. A pedestal.
Uh, instead of just on the pole.
Instead of just on the pole.
Right.
And then have your outlets.
On that pedestal.
On that pedestal and have them. Protected.
So do we have an estimate as to how much that would cost? Do we have an idea? Not an estimate, just an idea.
Well.
We'd have to set two posts and make a. Pressure treated.
Yeah.
You'd have to pressure treated. Kinda like a, you know, the two posts.
Yep. Boards.
Your, no, the box is probably a good. Two fifty.
Okay.
Have to have a, you'd wanna. Need a meter ten with a breaker underneath it.
Yeah, so I'm betting right now with the P, with the pressure treated and the meter box, I'm betting you're close to five hundred dollars already.
Oh, at least.
Well, I mean, if you're saying the meter box is two fifty.
Yeah.
Pressure treated hasn't gone down at all.
You haven't put labor in.
And then you gotta put your labor in there and you also gotta put uh, breakers.
What's that?
And rewire and redo the wiring.
And redo the wiring.
Twenty five hundred. I was gonna say twenty five hundred to three thousand. So.
I think you get a better estimate tomorrow because I'd have John Richards write it up for me.
You know what? Then we can, because we still have some low hanging fruit to still look at.
Yep, okay.
I could actually have John come out with what we'd like.
Here, I have a question. You are on the ball.
Or you only get a half a question then?
Is that the question? Is that the question? I was gonna say, that's easy to answer.
I'm sure you remember that.
No.
I can look it up.
So there was a motion made to give the BCC six hundred dollars to order flowers.
Yes, yes.
Was that six hundred dollars supposed to put in their fund before the end of December?
Yes, so that six hundred dollars was to cover the expenses that Lisa had, Lisa Stone. For buying flowers, which she had to put a six hundred dollar. Not deposit, it was a six hundred dollar purchase, but she had to buy it all upfront before the first of the year.
Right.
Saw that, no. I don't know. So.
So maybe. Which one?
It was Zebra Meadow.
This one?
Nope. On your sheet, yes.
Okay. There is a flowers line.
No, but what I'm saying is if you're giving the money to the BCC, do you want me to put it in your?
Yeah, cause that's what I said when you're giving them the funds.
Okay.
Now, how much was that? Six hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars.
Oh, I thought you were.
It was six or six.
Yes, okay.
So. I will change that sheet again.
Okay.
And that's six hundred into there.
And what? Okay, and where we had anticipated, because at that point we hadn't had any. Um, is the majority of that, we we would deplete the flower line. Um, at that point, we hadn't had any, so we had five hundred dollars in that line. Now it's at three fifty, but that's still three fifty. That could be used towards those flowers. Could be taken out of that line.
Six hundred and three fifty?
No, 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 that three fifty would be.
Put. How much do you want to put in the BCC?
Six hundred.
Just the six hundred.
He's funding it, three fifty is being funded from the flower line in the.
Cause when we were trying to do the figure.
Right.
Thank you.
And tell the next treasurer?
We did.
Yes.
When decisions are made, if the treasurer is. Someone get more like them, no.
Wait, so you want us to notify the people that are in charge of making these things happen?
That would be nice.
That seems way too easy. That seems like it's way too easy. I feel like we might have told Tammy to do that.
Yeah, we might have.
She's not here to defend herself. It was. Tammy's fault. It's on the record, it was your fault.
And.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, did uh, did Tom sign his paper?
Contract.
It's not a problem. We'll get it.
We'll get it.
So he's not. So he's not super worried about getting paid, done?
No.
Well, he told us when he got hired that he just sold his business and it isn't really about the money. It's more keeping him busy.
Okay, perfect.
Kind of employing.
Last thing we discussed was garbage. We put five thousand dollars in that account. Um, health insurance, we don't cover health sleeping. You, Nora. Um.
Where am I at?
We jumped over the guy. We did the gravel pit before we left.
I gotta catch up here.
Todd, what I'll do is I'll make another copy of this.
I copied Terry's.
Well, yeah, that's the second page.
So we allot. So the gravel pit. Lined out.
Yes.
Lined out.
Correct. We just did.
Five thousand.
Health insurance, we won't know what the is until.
Right, right.
Right.
Last year.
Stipend is.
So hang on just a second. Last year we budgeted twenty eight thousand dollars. Right. We spent eleven.
Right.
So I feel. Confidently that we could drop that down to twenty, even if the insurance goes up significantly.
Eleven or twelve.
So actually, hang on a minute. You're not taking the insurance.
Right, it's only my.
Alan's not. Alan is not, so it's only a thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Why do I, it was more than a thousand. No.
I'm saying is twenty eight thousand is overkill.
Right, right. That's true.
That's right.
So let's just say that Marquis is gonna cost, what's eleven times twelve?
On two people and that would cover the stipend too.
What's eleven times twelve?
Hundred twenty, twelve, three hundred?
Yeah.
It's a little over twelve thousand, like twelve thousand three hundred, right? Let me do, let me break that down.
Eleven hundred.
Seven hundred?
Eleven hundred times twelve.
Eleven hundred times twelve.
Ooh, that was way too big a number, Terry.
Yeah. Way too big.
So thirteen thousand.
Twenty six.
And then half of that.
Thirteen two.
Thirteen two plus half of that, same.
Sixty six hundred.
So sixty six plus twenty grand. So twenty thousand would be.
Todd, why didn't I just go with my first number, Lance?
You're still eight thousand. I already ruined you down, so.
You're still eight thousand cheaper, and then the next line where it says stipend twenty-eight, I would eliminate that, put that right with the insurance. Twenty thousand would do.
How did we, how did we stipend twenty-eight thousand? That's gotta be false.
It's not stipend twenty-eight.
That's what it says.
No, this is eighteen hundred.
It says eighteen hundred online.
Eighteen online.
That's how much we spent.
One beer has been sending us.
So the health insurance is twenty-eight thousand, the health stipend is twenty-eight thousand. The health stipend, what is, what is the stipen? I always forget, it's twelve hundred.
I think it's a misprint, as you go down a couple more lines on the one I've got.
Oh, yeah.
It's twenty-eight thousand for. North station, so I'm assuming.
There's a misprint there. Oh, somebody, somebody got a little aggressive with the tab key, cause as soon as you hit H, it'll pop up the next thing you type.
Twenty-eight for the health stipend, I think if you did the two, twenty thousand for the health insurance and stipend.
You cover both.
Would cover both.
I would just assume though, just for budgeting, you gotta keep them separate.
Okay.
So, the health insurance will budget twenty thousand, but the health stipend, that's you and Alan, it's twenty-five hundred. Which would give us an extra hundred just in case, whatever happens, so twenty-five hundred there.
Twenty.
Why are we doing twenty-five hundred on health stipend?
Alan and Mac, so it should come up to twenty-four.
Right, so just.
I forgot Alan's.
Yeah, you put twenty-five, put another hundred.
So, heating fuel, this is for the south station and north station, so. We had five thousand for the north, for the south station, which is the actual shop that's used. And we used forty-one hundred. We used a thousand at the south or the north station. So we're like fifty-two hundred dollars, fifty-one oh, fifty-one ten.
Jesus, I think she, it just got all excited about twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, like I said, I think anytime they typed in H and hit the tab button, it picked it in.
So what are you doing on heating fuel, what do you figure this?
Fifty-one, one, one, fifty-four, five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Keep it the same?
Well, we budgeted.
Actually, at five thousand, we spent forty-one hundred.
Right. So my guess would be, we budgeted five thousand for here and twenty-five hundred for down there.
Right, yeah.
You spend down there?
Well, seven.
Yeah, so that would be.
So I mean, if we were to keep those at five thousand, and twenty-five hundred is seventy-five hundred for heating fuel total.
Yeah. Holy shit, yeah. Eight ninety-four for the south shop. Looks like a thousand, I don't know, it's. That twenty-six thousand, yeah.
So eight ninety-four is what was left out of the, out of the five thousand we budgeted.
Supposed to go down next year.
That's what I told him.
Yeah.
But Joe Library asked what the budget, I told him it's an election year, fuel is going down.
Right.
It'll go back up the next year though. Hydro cedar expense, budgeted twenty-five hundred, spent a hundred and eighty-seven.
Would you put down Josh?
Uh, seventy-five hundred for heating fuel, pardon me.
We need to get a trailer for that, Josh, would that come out of new equipment or would that be under hydro cedar expense?
Well, yeah, you can go either way on that one.
Yeah, I would, I would think we can just get.
How much we talking for a trailer?
You're probably gonna be looking at about two thousand dollars, maybe more.
Something, probably should have dual wheels, you know, tandem. You're talking something like tractor supply, one of those places that you can get. Yeah.
Um, yeah, but that's not actually left is the problem.
Yeah, they're about eighteen hundred. Yeah, to tote that thing.
But don't forget we've got.
I don't think it's, no, it's not a thousand.
Pretty good, actually.
Whatever it is, you know, that and a few bags of seed.
Yeah, we still got.
Towed it around slowly.
So hydro cedar expense, you're looking at a tandem axle trailer, lifted or flopped on the back.
Yeah, just so you know.
Um, yeah, cause you could take it off with forks and put something else on there, if you need, if you need to haul the tractor somewhere, you've got a trailer that can do that. Those aren't cheap. No.
Tractor supply had one, it was around eighteen hundred.
Depends upon the weight, right, when you're putting on.
Maybe I'm thinking a single axle.
The single axles, you can pick up.
I think it's like all seven, eight hundred pounds, one of those.
That's it?
It's gonna have.
Yeah, it's one of the garden trailers where.
I was gonna say, I bought a used single axle, for just like hauling my four wheeler and my snowmobile or my lawn tractor. And that one was eight hundred used.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be new, I mean, cause it'll never get running, as far as I know, it'll never.
So what you're thinking, do you need anything else for the hydro cedar? Cause I see you only spent a hundred and eighty-seven this year, is that pretty much the cost of your material?
Well, we're gonna start using it more, obviously, so I, you know.
So I mean, even if you doubled that though.
But that's also up on, up in ditch straw and stone and mud.
Right, you added some more up there.
For the straw.
So I mean, if you move it at twenty-five hundred, that gives you five hundred dollars for cedar supplies and two thousand for a trailer? Okay, so we'll leave that at twenty-five hundred.
I just made twenty-five thousand, oops.
Do not do that.
Gotta get that period.
Loan payback, what is that on? To our account? What account? The account we don't have any money in?
I don't know.
Which one? Six thousand.
It's a twenty-six.
Back and forth to these two.
With the bridge maybe, no, that was more than. Yeah, is it the stuff being paid back by FEMA?
Well, we didn't, did we budget?
No, this is an expense, though, we put it out.
Yeah, well, did we, did we value it, that was the thing?
Came out of road, went somewhere.
Yes, but did we loan payback to our account, twenty-six thousand, that really doesn't say. Twenty-six thousand.
Is that the bridge, Lance? Remember we borrowed from the bridge account to pay off something on the. Yeah.
That's right.
We, we paid, uh. I think we decided to pay off the bridge account, and I think that might be what that is.
So we're just.
That's just a one-time payment?
He is right, we did take from the bridge account to, to pay off the goat path.
It was, it was a little.
We got FEMA funds. So that's, he's right.
It was a little bit more than.
But it's a one-time payment.
Okay, we don't have to worry about that this year.
We figured it was legit because it was for a bridge.
Mileage.
Thirteen forty. But that was paid back once FEMA gave us funds.
Mileage, we budgeted fifteen, we spent thirteen, so keep it at fifteen.
Well, that's what I wanna talk about though, cause that, that's about twenty-four hundred miles, give or take.
Yeah.
Right? States reimbursing mileage now at a higher rate per what we had before, they're being rebashed to fifty-six cents.
Yeah.
I think we should match the sixty-seven cents, which is.
I don't get.
That's what, that's what they just proposed in the, what do you call?
Fifty-six.
So right here, I, IRS issued standard mileage rates for twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
Beginning on January first, twenty-twenty-three, the standard mileage rate for the use of cars, also vans, pickups and panel trucks. Will be sixty-five point five cents per mile driven for business use.
And as you said, the, the lister said it's going up to sixty-seven.
For the state for traveling.
Cause I get it from work and it's effective January twenty-first, the IRS standard mileage rate is sixty-seven cents for miles. Sixty-five point five.
Everybody's gonna have to pay that.
Yeah, so. The school I know adjusts theirs based off.
Having said that, the difference from twenty-twenty-three's mileage.
Yep.
Would be two hundred and sixty-seven dollars more, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars more, if they don't do another mill at twenty-four hundred miles.
And we, you had three fifty left over, right?
So we make that seventeen fifty.
Seventeen hundred just to cover, yeah.
Seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty.
You watch that fifty dollars is gonna save us.
That's right, it was seventeen twenty way back in twenty twenty, so.
Miscellaneous. We have not budgeted for that.
Under, under my thing. Well, that was the highliner replacement, right?
Yeah, I was just gonna try to not say that. I don't think we need to put in anything under miscellaneous, um, the main reason being, if you look at the second page. Um, in between the two and three lines, you'll see a total budgeted amount, total paid out. And a remainder and, um, I think we should take that into consideration while we're budgeting.
Yeah, but that money is gonna go until October.
Correct. I understand what you're saying. Don't forget, we're also having one of the easiest winters we've had in a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's knock on wood.
Yeah.
And it's a good amount, and I agree with you, but just cautionary.
No, no.
What are we talking about? Miscellaneous?
No, the balance on the second page.
What are we doing, Mike?
Page over.
I like doing seventeen fifty. That's currently.
Miscellaneous, we're not taking it out, we've just.
So the mower sale.
Yes.
Where's the, where's the new equipment from?
That one can be taken out completely.
Where's new equipment?
What's that line?
Mower sale to.
That's not in this.
Northern equipment.
Building, nothing in it.
Yeah, we haven't budgeted for that because we've bumped the two together.
So we just take it out, right?
So the mower sales have been scratched.
Yeah, north building can be scratched.
North station can be scratched.
That expense for like.
Is that my move? We haven't budgeted anything for it in the past four years.
Don't say, cause it does, we added something to that roof.
Yeah, everything we've done though, we've done. All together, and it's been split, so if, like if there is a repairs to north station, that's in here, two fifty-five. Um, we didn't budget for that last year though.
This expense.
Office expenses, we had the computer and the internet last year, do you foresee anything extra this year, Mac? Like that. Monitor's good.
Monitor's good, everything's good. Print something, I'd just soon come up here and print it rather than.
We'll scratch that. That's our move. Uh, not completely, just not budgeting for.
Pagers, that's still, that's probably.
What's it gonna come out on?
That's for Matt. Okay.
Yeah.
Max, pagers still worth it or?
It's actually all the boys have pagers. We scratched it.
Mine never went off last year. That one year that we had the mud, it went off a lot, but. To me, now that you got internet down there, I think I just as soon scrap that and just. Have them call down there, they can leave a message, we got a message machine now that works now, or, you know, I. To me, it just hasn't been you. I, well, I mean. Do more for the water thing if we're.
Mac, I have a question for you, and no disrespect, no, no, nothing, kinda like Corey was saying.
Okay.
Um, no, I, I. What if, cause we've said the pager is for the road commissioner.
Get rid of the two, keep the one.
Yeah, what if you're not the road commissioner?
Yeah, well, that's true.
How do we, how, how would we contact that? I think that would be, well, the pager would be covered either way.
Right.
It would just be, Matt hands it to.
Right.
Lance.
Well, we gotta think about it because you're thinking about retiring this year, so.
Well, why is he giving it to Lance? I'm just saying, why would your road commissioner pass off the pager?
No, they would pass it to the new road commissioner.
Right.
So Max, the road commissioner now, you're voted in as road commissioner March fifth.
Right.
His, his pager, no number changes.
Right.
So I think, and then he.
But how does?
That person, the road commissioner, then needs to be able to get in touch with the other two, possibly three people at that time, so I almost think we're adding a pager. Because they're not gonna be in contact with them like you are. You know what I'm saying?
Call him in.
How do you call him?
If you get a call, if you get a call at night, say ten thirty at night, somebody calls and says, hey, Mac, tree came down.
I call Mark with the phone, I, I text Al and he. Or I can call Al on the cell phone, either way, I call them.
Right, so there hasn't been any issues with communication where you've needed the pager?
But the pager was like, say Mark's up in the woods hunting, I don't think Al does any hunting, but you know.
If you're not home.
Yeah, and he, he actually texts me and says, hey, I'm going to a party, I'll be home at ten thirty the other night, I'm just. Fine, you know, I mean, he's, he's.
Till morning anyway.
I think, so at this point, I think the only one that's needed necessarily then is what you're saying, would be the road commissioner.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right, because you.
Save yourself those other two. Cause I'm the only one that can call the other two. Right.
Right.
You guys can if you know the number, but it's not public.
And I wouldn't want it to be.
Right. We don't wanna make it public, I think we'll get used for sure.
Right. So. Pagers.
One pager.
We budgeted, we budgeted for five eighty-six, assuming that's three pagers.
So, but what we, we probably need to look into it and see what the difference is. If we keep all three, or if we get down to just one.
I was gonna say budget five hundred dollars, because it could be bad issue, it could be three hundred dollars for one, or it could be five hundred dollars for three.
Well, the three cost us six hundred and something, so price not enough, but.
It might be one of those things where it's a deal because you're getting.
Why don't we find out? Cause I feel like Tammy told us that.
She did, but I don't remember what she said, Terry.
I don't either.
I just.
I just feel like the three.
Cheaper, cheaper.
Or two.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, well, let's figure it out. We'll give that to Mac to talk to Tammy, who seems to have the information.
No.
Sure, road commissioner, your pagers.
I, I, I don't, I don't know the phone number.
What are we doing for paving this year?
You can stop by.
What are we gonna do for paving this year? Paving with grants?
That's the, that's the matching grid, that's where we end by the town, the ten thousand or fifteen thousand, so that's not something we budget.
Was, when we get the money back from the state, from the FEMA work. Yeah, I agree. Academy Lane. Yeah. Should be top coated.
Ten or fifteen, yeah, I thought we have them both to fifteen, but I could be wrong.
No, I think.
Not bad till you get around the corner. Right. If you. No, by my house, it's not bad. That Academy Lane's, we gotta do something with that or it's gonna be.
It'll be dirt, yeah. Um, plowing.
Into us over here?
Yes.
Isn't that ended up dirt?
It's not dirt yet.
Ten thousand last year.
It's not?
What?
No.
Paving, plowing, we scratched completely.
Okay.
So we're removing.
Removing entirely.
Okay, move.
Radio license, we budgeted six hundred, it didn't cost us anything.
It did, we just, we just returned.
Paving?
No, we don't, we budget ten thousand, that's voted on from the floor.
Okay.
And, and are we leaving at a ten thousand?
I would, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's not in here.
It's not in there.
Off the floor, it's.
Yeah, don't put it in there.
Oh, mine isn't official.
So how much was?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Over six?
I don't think so.
Is six gonna be sufficient for next year, or should we bump to seven fifty?
What are you talking? Just for kicks. It's not on the warrant, is it? Cause we did, three weeks ago, she put it on a credit card.
Also, one rated out, you'd have to look through each individual line item, cause this.
Might be the only thing on that credit card.
Are you relicensing again?
Yeah.
It's licensed every year.
We were told.
Was the warrant.
Oh, yeah. Had from last year.
Oh, I didn't sign the last part of it.
You have the warrants right there in front of you, can you just check that and see what the credit card bill has on it?
Hey, while he's looking at the warrant, what truck needed towing? Not two? Oh, is that what happened?
Pulling back on with one of our trucks, it just, it's a thing.
And that was like four hundred bucks to fix whatever happened?
It's like three hundred just to get him to leave the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The road.
Al.
Oh.
Yeah.
Learning the roads there.
He was coming up the hill and the school bus parked in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
Slid off. Sat there, of course. Yeah. He kept going like this and she just sat there and when he put the brakes on.
Yeah, oh, it rolled, slid backwards.
Slid backwards and over a little bit, it was.
It's always fun.
Did, is it, was there anything?
Last Christmas.
Probably smaller truck though, right?
Oh, but it was a ride.
Oh, no, he didn't, he didn't go far backwards, you know. slid into the ditch nice and slow, but.
I did that. Headed up Chester after like this, first time doing that route, stopped middle of the hill, let it off, went to start again.
No.
Went backwards.
Yeah.
Had three kids on the bus, I said, hold on, cut the wheel, hit the brake, down the hill we went, sideways.
And I couldn't, I can't remember how much that licensing was, Josh, but I would, I would leave it where it is, cause it was paid for this year.
Six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Quick question, I missed office expense, did you delete that or?
Office expense, we left, but we didn't put anything in it. Because we may need to budget at a later date, but right now, there's no office expenses perceived.
So what's the reimbursement for?[1654.04]
Reimbursement, we didn't budget.
It says reimbursement.
That actually might be, if I have to think on that real quick. That might actually be. Um.
I think that's.
Drug tests.
No, I think that's clothing a lot, man, because up on top, she had seven hundred. So if we pay for something. Because Johnson didn't have it. We send, we, we submit a bill and it's, it's called reimbursement.
Right, I know, but I'd rather that was, that came out.
Well, yes.
So we're not gonna budget for reimbursement. Our numbers are different here, though. No, they're not, sorry, my bad.
So we're putting zero, we're removing it.
Reimbursement's gone.
Remove.
Repairs to North Station.
Yeah. Repairs to North Station, so what we're looking at here, Mac. We had six.
Five twenty.
No, we had two fifty-five.
Right.
What was that for, do you remember? Repairs to North Station.
Was there a window or?
Do we have a leak in roof?
A leak in roof?
Got a leak in the roof, but it was never, it was not.
Alright, so. How much, what are we anticipating to fix the roof?
That thing needs to be.
Steel, right?
The steel needs to come off and it needs all new underlayment, cause.
Okay, no, just.
That's the original roof from nineteen sixty-eight.
Painting, it won't do it.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Actually, no, that's sixty-six, I think that was built, right? And that's the orig- that's the original roof, we never put a new roof on it.
It looks like the mark on. He went up in the attic.
Yes.
And then we went and looked from the platform, it looks like it's. Uh.
It's just, yes.
So I mean.
There's screws in it, we screwed some of it where the nails fell out.
So you might get by with some.
But you might get by, but.
You know, some screws, some tar.
Good painting.
Yeah, and a painting. But you might file like that until you get a solid number, so I mean.
Our roof's doing the same thing.
Those guys come around the summer.
Yeah, but they do shingle.
We're having the same problem with the current station.
Are you?
They do steel too.
No, the ones that paint.
Oh, the paint guys.
White by that guy, white?
Yeah.
Yeah. He would.
They did domes burn.
Could do that, that building is so quick, that's a.
It's, it's flat enough that.
Yeah, you can do that in a day with a bucket and a mop, like, that's how I did my grandfather's when I painted his. It was literally just a five gallon bucket that you stirred and then. It's literally a mop. Slap it on.
If you try putting screws in and it, and it's rotting underneath, then we'll have to get a quote and.
Right.
Yeah.
I think so, I mean. Just strapped.
Think he said it was plywood.
Is it?
I, I don't know, but I think that's what Mark said was up there, I don't know.
It was built in the cities, it might be boards.
It could be just boards, yeah, that's, yeah.
Um.
It does need a front door, cause apparently when, uh. I think it was when Hutchins was here, somehow the. Double pane glass, one of them broke, so.
Yeah.
And the door is very sloppy.
Okay, that's, so a new door is probably three hundred bucks.
It was replaced in eighty-five, I remember replacing it.
I was sooner than better on that.
Not to say that was a long time ago, but I was.
How, how big is the roof surface?
Oh.
That's a pretty good sized roof.
Yeah.
You take it.
Right, cause screws.
I tell you what, you got that much time, I'll let you go count them. Screws are good cause you're smart, you got like two thousand screws.
Leaking, or if it's popped out.
Probably. Three days with space in the middle wholesale all the screws.
Wouldn't do the all the screws till you find out if the roof.
Right.
Underneath it is good enough to hold it up and.
Yeah.
And I mean, there's.
I remember we put screws in, the screws didn't know it.
Right.
So, here's my question. We can sit here and talk about what might be the problem.
Right, just go.
Or we can say.
Patch it.
We're gonna put fifteen thousand dollars in this account. To put a new roof on it and just do it. Sheathing and steel.
That's not part of that Merc?
No.
No.
I wished it was.
The North Station, this one.
I agree with you, you're gonna do it, it's never, we've never put anything.
Right now with the Merc, what they said is they're only looking at the, when they finally come out and do it, it's this and a lot, which I assume they haven't come yet.
No.
Right, this in the library, because of the amount of responses, then they would see about. The other buildings, but right now for us, they'd only, whenever they get around, let's look at this in the library.
Yep.
I think. I think if you put fifteen thousand in there. And get somebody to.
Just get you an estimate.
Get you an estimate.
Yeah.
If that's not enough.
Dan.
Then you've at least got a good chunk and we can.
Next year.
Yeah.
Or you get it done and pull some money from.
Something else.
Something else.
Yeah.
But I think fifteen thousand's gonna put a pretty good dent in it.
You wanna protect that building, we're saving forty thousand dollars. On gravel pit payments this year.
Yep.
And we can take fifteen of that and. Put it there and still come out ahead like twenty-five.
We're gonna do fifteen.
Just use Dan. He's awesome.
Dan, Dan.
Yeah, he's great.
So, just so you're on the same page, we just put fifteen grand on North Repair, North Station Repair.
Alright. That better cover the door too.
Road erosion.
I got some plane boards.
Road erosion renewal fees.
Money left this year to do?
So, we have to get through to October, we need to do. It wouldn't matter, because even if you spend it now, it's still gonna go on this budget.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, because we're past the. Road erosion renewal fee, that's on. Um.
Permit, permit.
Yeah. Two fifty, is that?
No, it's, uh, two fifty, it's, uh.
Oh, two fifty's a gravel pit, yeah.
It's the erosion.
So it was.
They charged us six forty last year?
Huh?
Sorry, go ahead.
I believe that's what it was, yeah.
Why was it so high in twenty twenty-two?
He did a lot of.
Red, we spent eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars out there.
That was the fee of fine we got for not filing it the ten years before that.
Oh, really?
Man, that space over there, he was like last home, man.
Putting in there?
We put a thousand dollars?
Yeah. I would.
Seven hundred?
Well, it's only six forty.
Yeah, but this is the state you're talking about.
Yeah, I was gonna say their price probably doubled, it would probably be thirteen. I'm gonna put a thousand.
We didn't spend any money on roadside? Swear we bought roadside. Why isn't there any money to it?
Let him know.
Nine expense. We budgeted five hundred, we spent thirty-eight.
I was texting him the whole time.
Because Carl did reimburse for the.
He did?
Yeah.
He did? I was gonna say.
We just did on one and not on the other.
It is on the.
We've got road signs, we have signs. We got two lines, it's.
Where are you seeing signs?
There's a, there's a line item on the road account continued expenses. Signs, and then we got another, further down it says signs.
How about this, we're gonna take the one that says signs and we're gonna cross it out completely.
Good idea.
And we're only gonna do road signs, because this is the road budget.
Right, I, it just.
So, sign expenses, we budgeted five, we spent thirty-eight hundred.
Oh. I bet that other signs is like caution.
Yeah, but that. Included the ones that were purchased for.
That was everything.
But doesn't really matter.
I think.
So.
Signs.
Yeah.
Reimbursed for that.
We did.
Think that would've gone back into that account.
Well, it would've gone into the.
We had.
It would've gone.
The post we bought was very expensive.
It would've gone here.
I don't know what it was, a lot of them.
Paving, reimbursement stump grinder stated. ATV permits.
Roadside mowing.
Frickin' signs gets shit on me the other night, reflected.
So how much for signs?
Well, we spent thirty-eight out of five thousand, we just keep it five grand.
We spent thirty-eight out of five hundred.
Like I said, most of that was post John, I, I would go a thousand, you know.
Most of that was John complaining about where the post was, is that what you said?
Yeah. Where they relocated.
A thousand dollars would be sufficient?
Cause I know, signs are expenses, I've found out, but I mean.
Five hundred of that was relocating them the next time, so. I had thought I was just giving the road crew something, go.
To the other side, salt, chloride and cold patch. Budgeted twenty-five of.
Roadside mowing. Where did we start?
Okay, we, we went to rental.
We scratched.
Rental equipment. And that's ten grand, I put ten grand in there. Alright, salt chlorine, um, salt, salt, chloride and cold patch, we put in twenty-five thousand last year, spent twenty-eight.
I think I'd go to. At least three on that.
Thirty?
Uh, thirty, yeah, thirty.
Getting thirty on cold patch, chloride and salt.
I mean, the way.
Thirty thousand.
The way salt's going right now, we don't use that much, but if it happen to be a dry summer, you might use an extra tank of chloride.
Roadside mowing, we crossed out input equipment rental.
Okay.
And made that ten grand.
Yeah.
That we did before we. Before we got anywhere. Shop expenses.
What you do with sand, gravel, stone?
We ain't got there yet.
What's the next one?
Well, yeah, we haven't got there yet.
Uh, which sheet?
That's the problem, isn't that the one up above, no? You know what, he's on, he's on the. The packet, not the Excel sheet.
Sand, gravel, stone on that budget, so, on this one.
Oh, no, there isn't on there at all, that's what.
Have we, yeah, but have we budgeted for it?
I don't know, but he's got this thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars according to this, we should.
Oh, we bought a lot of stone this year.
So thirteen, two seventy-nine, that is the amount in ditch straw stone. If you look.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
God's sake.
So we cross that one out?
Yeah.
Well, wait, do we have that on that one?
Yeah, it's up on the top. We've already hit that one when you were.
So scratches out.
It's a repeat.
We put fifteen. We put fifteen in there, so ditch straws and gravel stone is the same as ditch straw stone.
Okay.
Which is the same as Steve, Bob, Ralph and.
Shop expense, you did five thousand, you spent seven.
Thousand.
Oh, so what does that go through, Mac, you know?
We buy, you know, like, uh.
Lot of frickin' light bulbs.
Not light bulbs.
Well, maybe a light bulb.
Well, wait a minute here, you were open your budget.
I understand that.
Bolts and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, some things are on, on, out of control, you know, I mean, you can't. Uh.
Metal, is it like metal if you need a piece of metal or something?
Yeah, if you get something from Jamie.
Right.
The only thing was, in a, you, you probably remember this, we talked about a new air compressor, that was the only thing that we would add to that, so.
Okay, yeah.
New air compressor was approved by a vote from the slide board and he didn't buy it yet.
Yeah, I know.
So we went twenty-one, thirty-one, fifty-one, seventy-three.
Cause he's already twenty-three.
I'm not bitching, I'm just making a comment.
Mac, we're gonna have to curb your expenditures here. In the past five years, you've gone twenty-one, or twenty-one hundred, thirty-one hundred, fifty-one hundred, seventy-three hundred.
Okay, you wanna see my grocery bill?
So, are you thinking seventy-five hundred is what we need in it?
We don't usually spend what I spend.
I was gonna say, let's put.
Really?
I mean, put five.
Five again, okay, five.
Say five again.
And just don't let him go over.
That's it.
He'll, he'll just spend it anyway.
That's right. He's gonna say, he don't care what's.
Uh, sample I R A, something that she's.
Simple IRA town share, oh, that's for the.
Yeah, we put in six thousand.
Their matching funds, right, or whatever.
Three percent of their gross.